Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. This is a special meeting for Wednesday, November 4th. We are, we are all assembled, and so let's have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Pastor? Commissioner Pastor? Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
I think that was a here. Commissioner Reese?
Present.
And Chair Landrus?
Present.
So that takes us to item four, the Planning Director's Report, and welcome back, David.
Great, thank you, Chair Landrus. Missed you guys the last couple of meetings. Wanted to welcome Commissioner Raskin. Look forward to working with you. Getting to the report. Our next meeting, November 18th, that'll be a 7:00 PM start time. So we will have a Housing Element Update Study Session, waiver parcel map. We will set the hearing date for an ARB appeal at 24 or 25 20th Street. And then a resolution for Planning Commission Rules of Order during the COVID emergency. First meeting in December, or actually it looks like the only meeting, will be 1643 12th Street. So that's a existing condo building where there's some issues with the HOA and some square footage that's been added to the building over the years that we need to get a resolution on. And then also that same night, 1650 Euclid Street, which is a, I believe, Jing, that's a creative office building. And then coming up at City Council on November 10th is the St. Monica's Development Agreement Amendment that the Commission reviewed a few months ago now. And then the extension of the Economic Recovery Interim Zoning Ordinances. Those are the ordinances that were adopted at the onset of the COVID emergency. And then at City Council on November 24th, Jing will do a City Manager's Report on the Housing Element Update. Speaking of Housing Element Update events, we have several things coming up. So the Notice of Preparation on the Update, EIR was released on October 30th. This week, call for the participation in the technical working groups. November 12th, 12:00 PM, and at 7:30 PM. And then again on November 14th at 10:30 is an introductory webinar. All three of those will be identical, so it gives three different opportunities for people to log into that. And then finally on December 10th, the Housing Element Update, EIR Scoping Meeting. So a lot of work coming up and really over the next, really the next year plus on the Housing Element Update. So staff and the Commission and a lot of others will be very busy with that. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that last week at City Council, the Council did approve, as part of the budget, the creation of the new Department of Transportation, which I think, as you all know and you discussed at the last meeting, and I know Sean and Elisa, I know you had conversations with the City Manager about this as well. But that involves the moving the Mobility Division and the Parking Division into that new department. And they'll combine with the Big Blue Bus to create the Department of Transportation. So that concludes my report and happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions? I see Commissioner Fonda Bernardi and then Commissioner Lambert.
Yeah, David, is there, are we in the appeal period for the SCAG Rena numbers? Where do we stand in that?
I believe the appeal period has closed. Jing can confirm that. But my understanding is that the opportunity to file an appeal on those numbers is, has passed.
That is correct. Yeah, the appeal period has closed. All of the received appeals are posted on the SCAG website, so anybody can view that.
When was that period closed?
It was September, it was, oh, 11th to, I think it was like end of October, if I'm not mistaken. I have to look that up, though.
Okay, well, let's move on. You'll get that later.
Sure. Commissioner Lambert?
Me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions about the Housing Element process. One is, so the draft, the draft EIR is out. Do you understand that correctly?
No.
No, there is a preparation of the draft EIR.
Yep, that's right.
That's right, yep.
It's just the one op. We wish it was out, but it's not.
Do you have any idea of when the EIR will be ready for public comment?
Got the way lost, Jing?
Yeah, it's, it will track with the transmittal of the draft Housing Element to HCD. So we're looking at probably early summer of 2021, when that would be available.
So what would be the substance of your scoping meeting in December?
Well, the purpose of a scoping meeting is to provide the public the opportunity to provide input on issues to be studied in the EIR.
Okay.
So that's what it's for.
And going to Mario's question, there's only one entity locally that could actually appeal Rena numbers, and that would be?
That's the City Council.
Finally, the Technical Working Group invitation went out this week. Did I understand that right?
No, it's going to go out this week. Yeah, we're still, we're just kind of putting together the message and we'll be emailing stakeholders to invite participation. And certainly people can share that with others. We are looking for people who are technically knowledgeable about housing to assist in this. You know, it's not sort of a general public workshop in that regard. It's people who are knowledgeable, willing to invest the time, because it will be a pretty rapid process. You know, so, you know, that's the purpose of the working group. This is kind of modeled, the ability to bring a lot of different voices together quickly, kind of roll their sleeves up, you know, is kind of what we're looking for.
I understand, alright. It's a technical working group, so you want people to know something about housing development, isn't it?
I think, it's not just development. It will actually be two groups, Production and Housing Stability/Persevation. So, you know, so I think we're looking for perspectives on, you know, different, it's not just solely focused on development.
Okay, well, the reason I asked, I brought up this up before, there are several general contractors that have asked to be included. So Tara knows them, so if this goes to Tara, she can contact them.
Yeah, I think we are notifying kind of like stakeholders that have, you know, been involved in housing issues in Santa Monica and obviously kind of, you know, encouraging people to share it with their networks. You know, because obviously we don't, we don't know, you know, who people are talking to or who might be interested in this. So that's kind of, you know, the strategy we're taking.
And let me just, I mean, a piece of advice, because I used to do this for a living. I think that just having one meeting of a focus group is probably not that productive. So I would assume that they would give you input initially, and then when whoever did?
Yeah, we will talk, yeah, we'll talk more about this on November the 18th in terms of the structure of things. But we anticipate, we have topic areas for multiple sessions. You know, we have, you know, set dates, so hopefully people can be available to join in on those things. So, yeah, so we will share that with you. I don't want to take up too much time right now, yeah. Just to go back to Mario's question, the appeal period was September 11th to October the 26th. And the comments on filed appeals can be submitted to SCAG or HCD between October 26th and December the 10th.
So I have a couple of questions, actually. First, I just want to make sure that folks know that we may be meeting one or two more times in December, agenda items pending. So the slide does say December 2nd, but there are, there is potential for, there will be a meeting on December 9th, as I understand. There is the possibility for a meeting on December 16th. The, there is an invitation out from Elisa and me to Ed King and the Mobility Team to come to the Planning Commission sometime before they have, they have to return to council to, with their, with their more detailed plans for the merger, which I believe is supposed to be the end of January. The other thing the Commissioners should know is the Council directed this, in the course, directed staff to look at the creation of a Mobility Commission as part of the Boards and Commissions' review. But there will be presumably a separate opportunity for this body to give some input into what would be appropriate for the Mobility Commission, because that might take some things off of our plate as well. Lastly, could we potentially, we have in the past appointed Commissioner Liaisons to Technical Working Groups. We did it for R1, we did it for Promenade 3.0. For something as important as the Housing Element, I think we ought to look at appointing Commissioners as liaisons to those Technical Working Groups. So if we could add an agenda item on November 18th to enable this body to appoint one or more liaisons to each of those Technical Working Groups, I think that would be very good, since we do have, we have some expertise here that we can take advantage of. Lastly, I want to just add to, just so that folks know that it's coming. The reason for the resolution related to COVID-19 and our Rules of Order is that we have been meeting under special meeting circumstances since we started up virtually in April. And what that has meant is that we have not had General Public Comment, which is, in my view, not okay, because there are frequently opportunities for folks to come to the Planning Commission and speak to us about issues that are not on our posted agenda. So staff has been looking at the various options. You may be getting, you may be hearing from staff asking for your availability on a permanent basis for 536, 637. Please reply honestly, because we're going to be, we can obviously change a resolution, but we want to get this right.
You can mute me and watch it with your headphones. I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Sorry, can we, can we have anyone who's not speaking mute themselves? That would be great. So I just want to let you know that that's coming. So the goal is that the public will have some certainty about what the next uncertain period of virtual meetings will look like in terms of their, their access to us. Council has been running General Public Comment, but we have not. So that, that's what I wanted to add on that item. Let's, are there other questions for David or Jing? Then let's go to Planning Commissioner Announcements. I don't see any, I will just make one for your information, which is related to that. Ironically, I had a piece come out today on the Need for Brown Act Reform precisely related to that issue. It does reference my Commissioner title, so, though it does state clearly that my views are my own, but that appears in Cal Matters and is informed by our experiences here and navigating the need for active public comment. Before we turn to, before we turn to our next items, I want to say two things. One is that we are, many of us, I think not all of us, but many of us are operating on fumes. I want to acknowledge that. Probably some of our presenters and some of our public commenters have been up for a very, very long time. And I want to ask, in all humanity, for us to be gentle with one another and with the public. This is, this is a moment, and our job is to do our job. It's to follow the law, it's to be respectful, and, and to honor our code of civility. I know we can do that, and I think it's important that it be said because of the moment that we are in, both at home, here in Santa Monica, and nationwide. I want to acknowledge that we are a place for all voices to be heard and all perspectives to be respected. And with that, please note tonight's-
I'd like to add one thing. I would also ask for the Commission that we be as succinct as possible tonight, because we all are very tired, and really try to keep our comments as to the point and short as possible.
That's, that's third on my list. Please note tonight's procedures for public comment. We are accepting oral public comment through the preregistration system noted on the agenda. Registration for oral comment closed at 2:30 PM today. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the Commission. Comments received after the noon cutoff will be retained as part of the public record, but will not be reviewed by the Commission or read aloud tonight. If you are a, if you are a member of the public who registered for public comment, please check your email for call-in instructions. They were sent out at the start of this meeting. I will also add, because it came up at the last meeting, if you did not register by 2:30 PM, out of fairness to those who did, we are unable to make exceptions to that deadline. And so we will be hearing from people who registered before 2:30 PM. At the moment, I'm advised that we have at least 40 public comments, 40 people registered for public comment across both items, which of course raises the issue as to whether or not the Commission wants to shorten public comment tonight. And so I put that before you, if you want to limit public comment to two minutes or one minute. Commissioner Lambert?
I would say we limit it to two minutes. Unless someone wants it shorter.
Is there, I can't hear, I don't hear anybody else. Is there a second to that motion or not?
I would even say one minute. I mean, or I would ask that if people have, you know, written comments, which we have read, we've read all of your written comments, really try to keep your, keep it concise, because we do read what you write and we do look at it.
Agreed, I take it back.
If I may, if I may make a small clarification. Your Rules of Order actually automatically reduced speaker time to two minutes when you, when you have over seven speakers on one item or 20 speakers over multiple items. So under your Rules of Order, you already are at two minutes, if there's no action necessary.
Would, is there, if there is no motion to move to one minute, I will, I will proceed. If there is, but I'll leave a brief moment to see if there is a motion.
I move one minute.
All second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, in fairness to everybody here, I know that we're all tired and everyone in the public is tired. I think one minute is, it's difficult to make meaningful comments in one minute, and I would support two minutes.
And if I may interject again, my apologies, if I may interject again for your consideration. I'm not aware of an instance where the Commission or any other city body has actually reduced it to one minute. The Council Rules of Order do, do have rules with respect to speaking on multiple items. So you can speak for one minute if you've already spoken on another item for two minutes. And, and if you only ask for one minute, you may move to the front of the line. You don't have any of those. So I would, I would be a little concerned about shortening it that much when it's not part of your normal procedure.
That's fine.
Is the motion run? Okay, great, then we will, we will therefore move on. We have no minute, there are no other announcements, right? So there are no minutes to approve, there are no statements of official action, there is no public hearing on the consent calendar. And so we move to item 9A, 438 Santa Monica Boulevard, 19 ENT 0250, Conditional Use Permit and a Minor Modification. This is the, in short form, the Carl Thorpe item. So let me ask now for ex parte disclosures, and since there had, this has been before us for so long, could I just ask staff to do a roll call with each Commissioner related to ex parte on this item?
Sure. So usually on ex parte, I think you kind of will just go down the line and you can share whether you had ex parte or not.
I just-
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
None.
Commissioner Fresco?
None.
Commissioner Lambert?
I have been around the site, not this time, but all the other iterations when it's been before us. I've been walking around the site. I've also been in email contact with the representative of the applicant. And I've read all the public comments.
Not yet.
Commissioner Pastor?
I believe that I spoke with Representative of the applicant quite a while ago, and that's it.
Commissioner Raskin?
I have also been to the site several times in the past, though not inside the school campus, just on the street. I emailed-
Can we have everyone mute themselves who's not speaking? Commissioner Raskin, go ahead.
Thanks. I emailed Mr. Kutcher this afternoon to ask what additional noise mitigation would be provided in the future if the school exceeds the noise ordinance, and he responded this afternoon with an answer, and that's it.
Commissioner Reese?
Believe I had one email exchange with the representative prior to the first hearing we're going to have on this, and I've not talked to them since, and I've been by the site.
Well, and Chair Landrus?
On November 2nd, roughly 4:48 in the afternoon, I had a conversation with Mr. Kutcher related to the agenda and discussions about potential changes to the project pending discussion. And that's it. So now we will hear the, we'll hear this staff report.
Good. Good evening, Commission. My name is Gina Seelak. Can you see my screen?
I see a black box.
Hello?
Blank. Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Do you see an image yet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioners. My name is Gina Seelak, and I'll be presenting the project before you tonight, the Carl Thorpe School. The school is located at 439 San Vicente Boulevard, and their request is for a Conditional Use Permit and a Minor Modification. Conditional Use Permit number is 19 ENT 0250, and the minor modification is 20 ENT 0066. This is the subject parcel. It's located in the R2 zone along San Vicente Boulevard. The parcel size is 4,000, 46,362.5 square feet, and it has dimensions of 213 by 217 linear feet. The school is requesting a modification to an existing Conditional Use Permit. The Conditional Use Permit was approved in 1996, as well as an expansion that was approved. This particular request will modify the conditions of approval of CUP 95-012. The proposal will add square footage to the first, second, and basement levels of the school. It includes a multipurpose room and associated corridors below grade, a enclosure of a lunch area, which is at the grade level, administrative offices, which are on the second level, and a upper-level play court, which is proposed in the rear of the site above an existing set of offices and parking. Here you see the request for the minor modification. I would like to point out that this is slightly different than what we relayed in our staff report. The request is for additional parcel coverage, and that additional parcel coverage includes three areas. Basically, the footprint of the lunch area, which is shown here, two elevators, and the additional square footage that we've included is a portion of an exterior stair. So the request for the parcel modification is for 45.29%. This is 0.29% over the R2 district standards. The site, subject parcel, is also located in the San Vicente Courtyard Apartment Historic District. The outline of that district is shown in red, and the parcels highlighted in blue are contributing structures to that historic district. Carl Thorpe School is a non-contributor to that historic district. However, they did go before the Landmarks Commission as preliminary to this discussion and this meeting to get the Landmarks Commission feedback, because they will be required to go and return, if the Planning Commission approves the project, to the Landmarks Commission for further approvals and a certificate of appropriateness. This is the existing site condition, showing the ground, upper and lower levels and their square footages. And this is highlighted area for the expansion of the multipurpose room below grade, which is shown in purple. This is the area for the first floor parcel coverage again, just shown with the lunchroom being closed and the elevators and the partial stair going up to the play court. This is the additional square footage that they are requesting for the second floor, which is offices and the corridor. And this exhibit is basically showing you the upper-level play court proposed. The arrow is, is, it is an unroofed structure, so the arrow is showing the, the size and scope of where that play court is. And the square footage of that play court is approximately 9,142 square feet. So the play court would be located above this, sorry, this structure in the rear, which is the underground parking for the school, or sorry, the parking for the school that is at grade. The second floor above this is existing classrooms. And then the play court would be located, the roof would be removed, and the play court would be located above this area. As part of the analysis that we did for the project, we asked the applicant to provide us with an acoustical study. That report is part of the attachments in your staff report. And that acoustical analysis measured the existing conditions and also proposed recommendations- and also proposed recommendations on how to help modify any exterior noise or limit that noise to be within the levels of the noise ordinance. So as part of the environmental analysis, we looked at both the exemptions for schools based on the square footage addition and their application is less adding less classrooms than required. So that we found that the Environmental Quality Act would exempt it under class, or section 15303, Class 3. In addition, since the school is located in the historic district, there is a analysis done as part of a non-contributor to that district. We found that the, the school would be exempt from additional CQ review based on section 15331, Class 31 of the state guidelines. Here you can see the perspective from across the street. This area in the rear is the play court, and the area closest to the front is the multipurpose room. DAF had received a number of comments. Originally, this item was scheduled in May. It was again rescheduled in October, and here we are, November 4th. So what we added to the recommendations were conditions to address some of the comments that we received from the public. Primarily, they had to do with circulation, transportation demand, and parking. Additionally, we were asked to look at the existing conditions of approval under the CUP 95-012. There was a code enforcement case opened. Code enforcement reviewed the case, took no affirmative action with respect to those requests. We found that that was not within their purview. The school had this operation at that time due to COVID-19. Additionally, there are a number of conditions that deal with the noise, potential noise relating from the additional play court. And lastly, there is information about our request to provide records in terms of the documentation that was approved for the prior approvals, current copies of plans, sections of codes, and plans that were approved as part of the construction for the school when it expanded in the 1990s, mid-1990s. As part of the review, the commission is required to make findings for both the conditional use permit and the minor modification. These are some of the findings that must be made. In addition, we received public comment before we separated out as part of the, what was attached to the staff report, comments received before May, when this was originally scheduled to be heard, and comments received after. So there are quite a few comments. We also published this in the Daily Press, and we've mailed out notices, I believe, three times now to the public within 750 feet of the site, announcing the public hearing. So staff is recommending that the commission approve conditional use permit 19 ENT 0250, approve the minor modification 20 ENT 0066, and approve the statement of official action, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. I would like to point out one other slight change to the staff report. We had said that the play court would have a wall that was six foot high with two feet of netting. The applicant has always proposed an eight-foot-high wall that would add two feet of netting on top of that surrounding the play court. Additionally, we have mobility staff here to answer questions that you may have relating to any of the transportation demand conditions that we imposed or the loading, unloading conditions. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. Let's go to questions, and let's start with Commissioner Fondabarnardi.
Yes, hi Gina. The extension of the wall up another two feet, does that fit within the R2 height limit?
Yes, it does. It still is within 30 foot allowed for the R2, and additionally, you would normally get a parapet wall above that.
And if we had it go up to 10 feet, meaning make the netting solid, would that fit or not?
If you assume that part of that was part of a parapet, a legally-repaired parapet, then you could go above 30 feet.
Okay. Now, we got, you know, we got a lot of testimony against this, a lot of letters against this, and it seemed that the two big problems were the parking and the noise. Have you done anything, or has the mobility staff done anything to address the circulation/parking problems that people have been complaining about for a long time?
We felt like we addressed those by adding the transportation demand condition. The school is not subject to that condition based on their scope of project work. They're voluntarily agreeing to that condition. That is a major kind of control mechanism that the city has. With the noise analysis, we felt that we took into consideration some of the comments we heard about exterior speakers. The acoustical analysis points out where and how best to alleviate that noise. I mean, obviously, children playing, there will be noise. But it was in an effort to address those concerns, and we felt that those were addressed. And we actually put in a condition also to have the noise analysis redone after the play court was built to see if there, what they thought was going to happen does happen. And if it didn't meet those standards, then we would take a look for the director and see if we could add additional kinds of conditions or mitigation measures.
Okay. And who would do that test to find out if, in fact, they are meeting the requirements?
This would be done by the acoustical analysis team that was hired as part of the applicant's. At staff's request, were hired to do an analysis, professional acoustical noise company. That's also included, you know, in the attachments. Their analysis is included in the attachments. Under attachment E.
Our last question was, there was a complaint that one of the people who was an affected party was not able to get a hold of the original documentation from 1995. Had that person been completely satisfied that they got all that documentation?
Well, I'll say what the city did, and I'll let that person answer, you know, to their satisfaction what they believe they received. But we have a file that has old documentation. It wasn't entirely complete. That, what we had was copied and physically sent to that person. We also have included PDFs of the former planning staff report and statement of official action with all the conditions and findings that was provided. And lastly, since the plans weren't in the original kind of storage box that we got from our provider, we arranged for the architect of record and the property owner, Carl Thorpe School, to agree to allow the construction documents from 1996, '97 to be viewed online via a secure, it's a secure folder that we created. So we feel that we have satisfied that request.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Fresco. You're still muted.
Sorry, Commissioner, can I just ask Gina to stop sharing her screen so we can see the question? Thank you.
My question has to do with some of the.
Sorry, we still have a screen share.
I know. I have to go back to find out where that is. I know, sorry.
There we go, thank you. Nina, you're tired.
Well, first of all, I'm just glad I'm not the only one with too much stuff on my desktop. So my question has to do with some of the conditions that the applicant asked to have deleted, which I think are standard conditions that usually appear in our STOAs, and that was number 57, 74, and 75. And I wondered if staff just had a feeling or a position or some advice on those for us.
Well, traditionally, we keep those in as standard. I think the applicant's representative is saying they're extraneous, so our position is we usually include them.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you.
Trying to hold the alphabet in my head.
What?
Trying to hold the alphabet in my head.
I have a few questions. One is, and I already know the answer to this, the school has been here for 80 years, correct? Right.
Yes, since '41 at this location, 1941 at this location.
That's what I care about. And the improvements we're talking about here will have no impact on the number of students or the number of staff, correct?
That is correct.
Did I understand you correctly that they were not required, because of the scope of this project, to do a transportation demand management plan?
That is correct. They are voluntarily offering to have that condition added.
If I read correctly, the staff orders, and they're also going to be, help me out here, PLO? What is it, PLO, pulp?
The LOP, the loading and operational. But I'm not exactly sure, loading and operations.
Yeah, I can, you know what I mean. There's going to be one of those done in addition to what we had before tonight by the mobility.
Correct.
Okay, so hopefully that will work out some refinements if they need to happen. The other question I have is, I'm confused. I think I was actually on the Landmarks Commission when the San Vicente Historic District was designated. It was one of the last things, one was there. And I'm interested in knowing, and I don't know if you can answer this, maybe someone else can, why the implementation ordinance isn't in place? Because it just seems like particularly cumbersome for non-participating buildings to have to go through the Landmarks Commission as these people did.
I think I will let Jing or Stephanie address that.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Reich. Just to quickly address that, we were fully working on that before the budget and staffing changed our priorities. So we, right now, don't have the current staffing to be able to move that forward as quickly as we had previously anticipated.
Well, since this is non-participating, what standards do you apply to the project?
It has to be reviewed for, primarily for massing, so to make sure that it, that nothing is really outside of the character of the historic district.
It just seems like an extra step that non-participants shouldn't have to go through. If they were in an implementation program, they wouldn't have to, presumably, maybe.
So if I may piggyback on that just briefly, there is actually a specific finding in the Landmarks Ordinance for non-contributors. It just makes sure that, as Ms. Reich mentioned, that it doesn't detract from the district, more or less. And then also, and Ms. Reich may want to speak to this as well, but this project would likely go to the ARB in any event. So it's not an extra process, it's a different process.
I got it, you're right, okay, thank you.
Great, Commissioner Pastor?
Thanks, couple of questions. One is, for the PLOP, is it typical that that is not done now? And that it gets deferred to a later time? And who approves that and who gets input on that?
Our mobility division is the approver. We usually tie it into when the project is beginning, plan check, review, to make sure we have a timing mechanism for it. Did that answer your question? I wasn't sure what your first.
Yeah, it just seems like it's an important thing that's, that really is going to have a big impact on the neighbors, and that that's something that they're really worried about, yet they don't get to see it. I mean, there's, they don't really get to see it, so I don't exactly understand that.
Well, I will say, the way that the functionality for drop-off works now is going to be similar with probably more refinement, because basically that drop-off is in front of the school. They have a loading zone that is during certain hours of when school starts and when school is let out. So it is the refinement of that which is very similar to what is currently in operation now.
I also, if I can just augment Gina's response also, is that the parking, loading, and operations plan isn't, in this case, it's not like a, it's not triggered by a code requirement, so it's a condition, because this is a CUP. It's an opportunity to refine what the applicant has presented in their draft TDM plan that has been reviewed and preliminarily accepted by mobility staff. So this is additional moment to keep working, refining that before the issuance of a building plan.
And so, and I understand, so that the construction is phased, right? It's essentially going to happen over multiple years and not.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
And have, have you gotten, I don't recall seeing this as an issue that someone brought up, but has anybody talked about that's better or worse?
It has happened.
Has it like, right, it draws a gap? Yeah, I understand why you can't do the construction while the kids are in school and all of those things.
Yeah. Carl Thorpe actually did this with their conditional use permit in the mid-'90s. They did a phased construction. We've seen it, I believe, on New Road School. I think partially the school is, you know, they have their reasons for wanting to do it. Is it better for the neighbors or worse? I guess that's a matter of opinion.
And is there, and I'm sorry if I missed it in the conditions, is there like a construction, there is a construction management plan?
Correct.
And where's the staging going to happen?
Well, that would be part of the plan and worked out with the Public Works Division as part of the, looking at, you know, the construction plan check.
Okay, I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay, Commissioner Raskin?
Thank you. First question, there is a condition, condition 41, that addresses landscaping, the front portion. I'm curious, Mr., if you might know the answer to this, if that hedge is a registered non-conforming hedge?
The entitlements in 1996 for the school included the allowance for the fence in the front yard for schools. At the time, schools were, during that period, schools were allowed an eight-foot-high chain-link fence by right. At that approval, the condition was added to allow some visibility in. The hedge had been higher than eight feet. The applicant has trimmed the hedge to be eight feet, and I verified that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, okay. And then, I know earlier. Um, and then, I know earlier this year, there was some concern that the noticing, uh, or at least the description of the, the project noticing, uh, might have, uh, undersold what was being proposed onsite. So I just wanted, uh, staff to confirm that all noticing was, uh, done in compliance with the law.
That's correct. The onsite posting is in addition to the legal requirements we have for, uh, posting in the paper and the public notice that we circulate via the mail.
Okay, great. That's all my questions.
Great, Commissioner Reese.
Good evening, Gina. Um, luckily, a lot of the other commissioners asked a few of my questions, so let me be quick here. Uh, I want to talk about the noise study a little bit. And do we peer, do we have this noise study peer-reviewed at all? Or we just review what their, their noise consultant states?
We did not have it peer-reviewed. Um, but we analyzed and looked at like the issues that were brought up by the concerned residents as far as noise was relating to those conditions.
Okay, and then related to the noise study, there's a condition in there. I mean, they're, they said as a baseline, they took noise, they took noise measurements during recess or lunchtime, tied that to the rooftop to try to understand the noise impact. I'm curious if there's a relationship between the noise. I mean, you know, why did we feel that it was okay that lunch was similar to a active playfield?
Well, I think the school staggers the, um, because it's a six, it's a K through sixth, uh, elementary school. So they stagger when kids are on the field and when they're having lunch. They don't have a, you know, a set time where everybody can really be in the same place other than pick up and drop off. And that's one of the, you know, the reasons they're requesting the expansion. But I mean, I think they could better tell you when the kids are on the playfield and when they're not, but I think they have to program it, um, very tightly based on all the groups and, and children's ages and needs that they have.
So you feel it's appropriate, their staff feels that it's appropriate to use lunchtime as a baseline for when, for the play, the play area's noise?
But I think in terms of lunchtime, I think there are kids in the field, is what I was trying to say. Not every child can eat lunch at the same time in this school.
Okay. Okay, um, then in terms of the multipurpose room and some questions related to that is, uh, my read of the staff report, maybe I missed something, was that it indicates, we indicate that we're, the Calthorpe's not going to increase their, uh, number of existing events over what, you know, they're not going to increase what they have existing. I didn't see any kind of documentation on what they have today. Do we know, how were we confirming that they're not increasing what they had today?
Well, we do have a list of their potential events, that's the attachment I. Um, it, it's really going on the school's word of what they're doing today. You know, there's no way for us to convert because there wasn't a condition as part of the, the previous C U P.
Okay, and then tied into that, then we have another condition that says prior to any new, prior to any events, they will work with staff to, you know, create a plan. Are those, are those events above and beyond what's on that list?
That, that list is just an example of what those events could be.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I guess.
The special school event.
Sorry, where I'm going to go next with this is if, if they're not going to increase what they have, they've already told us what events they have, why should we wait for some future date to create those plans?
Plan. I, I guess I don't understand your question, create what plan?
Well, I'm looking at condition four in Sticks, just my notes, so I don't have the actual condition in front of me. And it says, you know, require the school to, for a plan prior to an event. And we're already saying that we know, we kind of have a list of what their events are. Why don't we just make them plan ahead and make, give certainty to everybody how we're going to work on this? Or how it's going to operate?
Yeah, give me a second to just look at the condition. Well, we list, uh, how many events, which ones could be after hours? Um. We've asked them to give us notice, uh, ahead of time so we can work with mobility to kind of alleviate any, um, traffic circulation impact. So I, I guess they're, that we feel that we are asking them to give us notice ahead of those events so we can work on the mobility conditions. And we also said, the last part of that is to, uh, notify residents within a three-hundred-foot radius of the property.
Okay, well, I, I guess I just ask why, why wait till they notify us of plant, of events? We already know they're going to have to define it, but, but I've asked that a couple of times. So I'm going to move on to, I'm going to move on to another question. On, on the playfield on the roof, my understanding is that the entire back roof from one property line to the other property line will be a play area. Your, your graph, your graphic showed about half of the site with a court. But isn't the whole area a new play, a new activity area, let's say?
Well, it, the nine thousand square feet plus, it, it is over the existing second-floor classrooms on that, that rear, uh, building.
From one side.
Of the alley. Yeah.
All, all the across it, okay. And, and that building's not going to come, I mean, I assume they're going to structurally upgrade that building to put the roof on top of it. They're not going to tear that building down, correct?
Correct. The roof would come off, the existing roof would come off enough in order to create the new floor for the play court. And then the parapet walls or the surrounding perimeter walls would go up.
Okay, so then, then that ties into, um, a condition that we have that the applicant is uncomfortable with, which is lid requirements, the low-impact development requirements under that building. I'm curious how realistic it is that they could actually do any of those low impact, in low-impact development measures when the sites are, when that portion's already developed?
Um, do you have a specific condition number on that one?
I'm sorry, again, I have, no, I have my type notes in front of me and I don't have it, I don't know this. But it's just.
Maybe give me a minute to find that. On the existing conditions of approval?
Yeah.
For the, okay.
It's a, it's, it's just one of the conditions. Turned with, it talks about having to do low-impact development in the, in, under the parking area, under the existing building.
I'll have to see that and maybe get back to you.
Okay, that's fine. Um, and, and then, what is the, what are we asking for when we ask them for telecommunications improvements?
Uh, these are more the standard kind of conditions.
Yeah. What is, what are, what are we getting at when we do that? Is that like cable, making sure they have cable and?
Um. I don't think, do you have a?
Yeah, if I can address that issue, I think this condition, um, I think upon reviewing, uh, seventy-four is a request for telecommunications, uh, vault, uh, which is essentially allowing, creating space um, for the city potentially to use to expand the, um, the city's communications network. Um, I think that this is one that we've reviewed previously. Um, um, you know, and it's probably not one that we, I think we would agree if that was removed. Um, but, you know, it's probably not something that's related to this. Um, and I think similarly seventy-five, which is about the street lighting, um, I think these were both inadvertently included, um, because they don't really apply to this kind of a permit.
Okay, great. Um, last question is, you're going back to Commissioner Raskin's question about the fence height in the front? I heard you say that the original C U P allowed for an over-height fence and had the right to go to an eight-foot fence or something for school?
Um, yes, sorry.
And then, and so the question is, was that, was that approval also related to the, the hedge?
It required landscaping, uh, as part of the fence approval, um, to, to basically screen the, the wall. Um, but the, the height would always be limited to what was approved for the actual wall, which was eight feet.
Okay.
That would be the height of the hedge and the height of the wall.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you very much. I appreciate your responses.
So I just, I, I really just want to go back over some of the process points for clarity. Um, which, which Gina, you did, uh, go over, uh, in summary. Um, I just want to confirm, there are no pending, uh, code enforcement issues either with code enforcement or more broadly with transportation or S M P D. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and the applicant has, I understand, has cut down the hedge height to eight feet recently?
Correct.
Right, okay, so now, um, we have a number of, we will hear from the public. Uh, I gather we will hear from the, the original complaint, the, one of the complainants. But I think we'll have an opportunity to follow up there. But I'd like to just clarify, um, Jane, you, you were going over some of these. I just want to understand, um, if we go to page eight in the packet with the letter from the applicant's attorneys looking for edits to the conditions of approval. Uh, let's see if we can just sort of clear some of these. Um. Like to know staff's position on, let's start with condition sixteen. You've talked about seventy-four and seventy-five, but let's just go over the others. Um. Condition sixteen. Is that okay?
Sorry, just give us a moment here to open that theme letter.
No problem. So I'll summarize it for folks who are, um, listening. Uh, this condition sixteen is, uh, noting that the T D M plan might be amended from time to time with review and approval by the city's mobility division.
Yeah, we, we would, uh, find that acceptable.
Okay, and then condition forty-one has to do with the hedge height issue. So that's why I asked.
Right, for forty-one, I think the staff report is clear in terms of staff's position and recommendation with respect, um, to that, to that condition. That was a condition the applicant is requesting, uh, to modify.
Well, I'm a little bit confused because the condition forty-one, you are asking for a clear through, clear view through the front fence, but there are, you know, legitimate child safety issues with respect to children's privacy. So I'm trying to understand what staff's position is with respect to balancing the question of view versus security.
Right. So, um, a, as I indicated in the staff report, there is a section in terms that, that explains staff's view with respect to that request. Um, we, we looked at it in the context of, you know, sort of generally the city's policy with respect to, uh, fence wall and hedge heights. Um, and, you know, the reasoning for the height limitations, um, you know, within the front yard uh, with respect to eyes on the street. We also did a review of, um, other public and private schools throughout the city. Um, I understand, you know, you received further correspondence from the applicant in response to that review. Um, you know, but we were looking at, uh, many, you know, many, many examples of, of public schools throughout the city into their playfields where you have clear chain-link, um, you know, barriers. Uh, and that's it, you know, it's not dense landscaping of any sort. Um, you know, so that, that is staff's position that, um, you know, as proposed in the stoa for condition forty-one, certainly it is the commission's prerogative to discuss that and, uh, make a different recommendation.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. I just wanted to clarify that. Condition fifty-three. Uh. There's some issue about the type of demolition underway. I, it is, this is a minor point. I just wanted to get staff's.
Right, um, that's, that's a standard condition. Um, I mean, I think it's, the clarification seems fine to us, though, so.
Okay, um, and then, so, so you are okay with the clarification or as written? That's fine. And then condition fifty-seven?
Uh, we're not inclined to change that again. That's a standard condition from public works, so. If it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. I think it's been our position.
So if it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. So since there's no, they're asserting no changes to that parking, therefore they would not be, nobody would go up asking them why they're not pre-treating the wastewater. Okay.
Right, but we are not going to be deleting the condition, yeah.
Okay, uh, and then, uh, I believe that they have continued to ask for other things, but not anything else. So that concludes my questions. Are there any other questions that have come up for folks before we open the public hearing? Uh, no, we're not part of the public here. We have the applicant. Um, and let me remind everyone that because we reduced the public speaking time to two minutes per person, the applicant now only has ten minutes to speak and they will still retain a three-minute rebuttal. Um, but the time limit is ten minutes instead of fifteen. Um, we have done a lot of reading, uh, we are here, and let's turn to the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioner. Uh, my name is Ken Parr and I'm the Director of Finance Operations for Carlthorpe School. I've had the distinct privilege of serving the Carlthorpe School community in my current role for the past twenty years. I want to begin my brief remarks by wishing everyone safety and good health as we head into the holiday season. And I'd like to thank the commissioners and the city for pivoting to an online platform so that our community can continue to function in these unprecedented times. As a fourth-generation community member and a native of Santa Monica and the CFO of a Santa Monica-based organization that employs eighty people, I thank you for this opportunity. I'm speaking to you this evening to advocate for our needed improvement project and to clear up the misinformation that has seemingly given cause to those who have expressed concerns about the project. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to inform you, the planning commission, and the residents of Santa Monica on the facts of the project and address the concerns about noise, parking and traffic. Carlthorpe School is the oldest independent school in Santa Monica. It was founded in nineteen thirty-nine and moved to its current location at four thirty-eight San Vicente in nineteen forty-one. Today, Carlthorpe School serves to educate students in grades kindergarten through sixth with a total student enrollment of two hundred and eighty and approximately eighty faculty and staff. Significant note, while the proposed campus improvements will enhance the educational environment for the school's existing elementary students and make it safer, quieter and more functional, no increase in enrollment is proposed, nor is it planned in the future. The school will remain at two hundred and eighty students whether we are granted permission to build or not. Carlthorpe School has undergone, has not undergone a major renovation in almost twenty-five years. We seek approval for upgrades to various support facilities in order to continue to provide our students with a high-quality and well-rounded academic experience and a modern educational program that is safe. We share a common goal with our neighbors. We seek a quieter campus. Optimal learning occurs when the environment is quiet and children have the ability to focus. We believe that our proposed project will reduce the noise on campus by dispersing the number of students who are playing in one concentrated field space during recess, lunch and P E. In addition, by enhancing the multipurpose room, we'll be able to host many of our existing outdoor presentations inside this new space. Enclosing our lunch area will also reduce noise. Parking concerns have been voiced in letters. I'll reiterate that this project will not increase the population size of our school. Therefore, the current parking protocol will remain largely status quo and is not impacted by the approval process. This is a city-wide problem and we welcome the opportunity to continue our work with city planners and the mobility division to optimize the commuting and parking arrangements for our school community and our immediate neighbors in a rational, fair and respectful manner. Uh, in fact, Santa Monica Police Department has commented that Carlthorpe School's drop-off and pickup routine is one of the most organized, efficient and safest systems in the city for a school. A recent accreditation team from the California Association of Independent Schools heralded our drop-off and pickup procedure as highly effective, well-defined and safe. I was born in the city. I graduated from Santa Monica High School and I can remember when I was sixteen and driving from my house in Sunset Park to a friend's house on the north side. It took less than ten minutes. Today, it takes much longer, just as it takes longer to drive to Dodger Stadium or anywhere else in Southern California. My point is that congestion and parking is a county-wide issue. Carlthorpe School will continue to do our part to develop best practices surrounding traffic and safety, making adjustments and enhancements when needed and staying true to our important fact that we want to be good neighbors. In closing, I hope that the city grants Carlthorpe School the opportunity to upgrade its facilities for the safety of its students, especially during a time when the global pandemic mandates that social distancing practices are implemented prior to reopening schools. Increasing our playground space and enhancing our multipurpose room are two specific and optimal ways to keep our two hundred and eighty children safe. We want to remain an outstanding educational asset to the community. And please be assured that we continue to strive to be good neighbors as we have for the past nearly eighty years at this location. I, for one, am happy to advocate on behalf of our students, their parents, and our eighty employees for this project. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Tara.
Good evening, Commissioners. Going to be sharing my screen. First, I would like to thank Gina for a great and thorough introduction to our project. My name is Tara Beebe and I'm a Senior Associate at K F A Architecture. In two thousand seventeen, leaders. In two thousand seventeen, leaders of Carlthorpe School came to us with an idea for a renovation of the Carlthorpe campus, and we were given a few parameters that were crucial to the project. First, we needed to be able to build the project without disruption to the academic year. Second, the improvements to the school were proposed to enhance the education offered to the students and not increase the size of the student body or the existing campus land area. And finally, the design for any exterior improvements was to remain within the context of the surrounding neighborhood with sensitivity to the courtyard housing historic district. An increase in the amount of open space has been a goal of this project since two thousand seventeen, but this has evolved to become a major priority in the advent of COVID and social distancing. There are three components of the project, and we will begin with the multipurpose room. This is a before photo on the right showing the current condition. The room, which is also shown in blue on the plan on the left, is too small and the ceiling is too low to hold a successful student performance or event. The proposed assembly space will include a stage and provide an interior setting for many school events that currently take place outside. Carlthorpe will be able to use the existing multipurpose room for everyday functions and maintain the assembly space to enhance their thriving arts program. The school has decided to pursue the expensive task of locating this addition below the playfield for a few reasons. It eliminates any impact to the open space at the ground level, and it is imperative that the playfield is available during the academic year. Also, the assembly space will not be visible from the street or surrounding parcels. And finally, there is inherent sound dampening based on the space being constructed entirely below grade. And to reiterate, many events that are held outside currently will be able to be relocated to this new assembly space. The second component of the project is the addition of an enclosed lunch space with offices above. This portion of the project is located adjacent to the courtyard because it is both operationally convenient and out of sight from San Vicente and Georgina. This scope will further reduce the amount of lunchtime noise coming from the central courtyard, and the number of speakers will also be reduced as a result of this enclosure. The third component of our project is the elevated play court, which is surrounded by eight-foot-high walls on all sides. You can see the play court here in this section, it's on the top right. The play court is located at the south side of the property and is virtually invisible from the San Vicente frontage. And this is the, the eight-foot hedge, a new photo of that. From the campus and from Georgina, the design of the elevated play court was developed to blend in with the neighboring buildings in character and architectural features. The idea of an elevated play court is nothing new in areas without the luxury of space due to high property value or density. Campuses in these locations often utilize rooftop play courts to provide additional exterior play area for students. This has also become more relevant over the past year where outdoor activities have become imperative to achieving social distancing goals. We have worked hard to make the elevated play court a minimal impact to the surrounding properties, both architecturally and acoustically. To achieve these goals, we added some dual-glazed openings to the walls with decorative metalwork. We made sure through careful coordination with Vena Clausen, our acoustic consultant, that this feature would not adversely affect the acoustic performance of the walls. We are proud of this design and very much appreciate your attention and consideration of this proposal. And now I will turn it over to Ken Kutcher.
Thank you, Tara. It's a pleasure to address the commission. And obviously, we're all tired from a long night last night. Believe it or not, this application was filed in June of two thousand nineteen, so it's been some time getting here. I'd like to mention to the commission that our sound consultant is available for questions, should there be any from the commissioners. As Mr. Parr outlined, we believe that all three components that we are proposing for this campus will further alleviate outdoor noise from school activities. Appreciate the fact that Chair Landress walked through the conditions of approval that we questioned, and appreciate staff's response to those. I'd just like to reiterate that by virtue of this CUP amendment application, there will be a STOWA that will have a number of new conditions that will protect the neighbors from further impacts that they've expressed concerns about. And we'll get a TDM program, we'll have increased bike parking, we'll have a limit on the number of special events, we'll have parking management for larger events.
Thank you, that has been ten minutes.
Happy to conclude my remarks at this point and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes, let's start with comments, questions, Commissioner. We'll go in reverse order, so we'll start with Commissioner Reese.
Okay. I need to find my notes again, but I think what I'll start right off with is can you talk to me a little bit, and there's probably your noise expert is talking to me about the baseline numbers we used and why we felt, or baseline information we used and why we felt that was appropriate.
Ms. Novak, can you do, address that?
Yes, I was, I'm Kathleen Novak. I'm an official consultant for over six years, I've got a classroom for eight and a half of those. I measured the noise level on the, during the recess hours because the recess was what was going to be replicated on the rooftop area. I walked around the students with a sound level meter in my hand. The students went about their, their typical activities. Some of them shouted very near to the microphone, and that's where the max levels came from in the analysis.
So was, thank you for that response. Can you tell me, was this, it's recess, so they were, they were eating and playing at the same time? Or, you know, there was some eating, some playing, is that what we're, we were seeing?
I was walking around the play area, which included the current basketball court area, they were throwing balls, they were yelling, they were climbing on the gym activity.
Okay, thank you for that response, I appreciate it. I think those are my questions right now for the applicant team, so I appreciate that, and I'll let somebody else dive in.
Okay, Commissioner Raskin.
Thank you. I'll, I'll preface this question by saying that I, I used to be a high school sports coach in a, in a former life. And I know that we're constrained by some code requirements for total height here, but I'm a little bit curious to hear your thoughts on whether the walls and fencing on the roof there will actually stop sports equipment like balls from going over it. You know, if you're going to be playing basketball up there, I envision some basketballs bouncing over that.
Tara, would you care to respond?
Sure, we have entertained, as Gina mentioned, some netting options as far as controlling any sports equipment coming over the top of the, the wall. We did extend it to be eight feet to provide additional protection from the six feet. But the, that is an operational concern that we've been working out with the school.
If it were possible, would you want to make the netting higher?
I think we'd welcome that.
Yes.
Okay, I think we'd welcome that, and I appreciate staff's comments about the added height that's allowed for parapet walls, and I think this is quite a similar condition.
Yeah, as we're going through this tonight, I'd be curious to hear what other commissioners' thoughts are, but I would like to work together to find some creative solutions for that. And aside from that, that's all my questions.
Okay, let's go to Commissioner Pastor.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the applicant for your presentation. And Commissioner Raskin, I appreciate those comments because I used to live next door to a school, and we, I had a lot of problems with basketballs coming over, and, you know, they had a couple of broken windows, and they were very responsive, it was fine, but netting would be great. I've got two questions. One is is, is it anticipated that the playfields will be used for any kind of like competitive, like, will teams from other schools come to, you know, play a soccer game? Or is it, or is, are the playfields only for the use of the Carlthorpe kids?
Mr. Parr, could you respond to that?
Yes, we do have games. They were listed in part of the attachments, I believe it was attachment I that was provided to staff. But yes, we do have games occasionally that come over. We currently host those on our lower court, which is close to the lunch area, but there, there is a possibility that we can host those up on the upper wall, I mean, rather the upper court.
Okay, so I, and I'm sorry I missed that. So is it anticipated there's going to be any change in the frequency of away teams coming?
That we do not anticipate any change in the frequency of what we currently do, no.
Okay, and then the condition that relates to events that staff has in the STOWA, which is, I think it's four. Do you know how, and I should have asked staff this question, but how we got to any school-wide event that draws more than fifty adult attendees? Shall be considered a special school event?
Yes, we, we arrived at that number by discussing with staff what would be a reasonable number to have. We currently have forty children per grade level, and if we had a grade level event, we can normally anticipate about forty parents, probably about half show up. We said anything normal outside of what a one-class level would normally have, we say, well, that's special and outside of the, the usual.
And when you have these special events now, regardless of whether they're called special events, where do people park?
Generally, in the surrounding area, street parking is where they are.
Okay, I think that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the members of the public submitted an email complaining about the bullhorn. I talked to Mr. Kutcher today, or emailed him today about that, and he assured me that no bullhorns are ever used at Carlthorpe. And, but I understand that, and you have actually replaced whatever sound system you had before now with walkie-talkies to coordinate getting students to the class or whatever, so there's no noise from that going outside. But then you, Ms. Beebe, Beebe said actually that there are speakers?
We do indeed have an outdoor speaker system. There are currently six speakers on that. Part of what we discussed with our sound consultants and through this process is that we would reduce the number of how we would use those, and we, the speakers that face outside of our immediate court area, we try to use extremely sparingly. Some of the things, as you mentioned, we have gone from dismissal announcements over those speakers to using individual walkie-talkies, and one of the things that we have proposed for our, our sound plan is to go to actual ear, uh, earbuds so that even those walkie-talkies are quieter.
Do the kids have walkie-talkies?
The kids do. It would be the teachers receiving the signal, the call that their parent is there, the teacher informing them by voice.
Okay, I got it. But I would imagine that occasionally there are school announcements over the speaker system that's normal for any school, so that's.
We do have a PA system that we use as a public address system, and we do not have a bell system. That was something that's been around for far longer than I've been with the school, but we call our children to order by simply clapping. And that's to address, address the neighbor noise.
And then back to the events. When you do a special event now, do you coordinate with the city, or is that something you wouldn't be doing?
It's not something we do now, but it's something that we are proposing to do in order to be better neighbors and comply with, you know, city ordinances.
Do you, do you give access to your parking structure for special events?
No, we do not. Our parking structure is not accommodate enough to have all of our parents park there.
Then actually Commissioner Reese brought this up, and I may have gotten this wrong, but I think he was talking about sort of the structural capacity of the roof for a playing field, so I'm, but I'm assuming before you do any, any other structural engineering building, and kids are not going to be falling through the roof.
Yes, we, we had a structural engineer look at that, and I have seen the plans. I don't personally understand the calculations, but we have had a structural engineer calculate that we can indeed do this.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Fresco.
All right, that took so long. Um, I just had one question for the applicant about the sport teams and those games. I don't see them on this list actually in attachment I, and I was wondering if you could point them out to me and explain how many of those kinds of visiting team events you have.
I don't have attachment I in front of me, but we have fourth, fifth, and sixth grade sports teams, usually two to three per trimester of the year. And they would normally have, I believe the calculation was between five and ten games that we could be possibly hosting. That's part of the Coastal Canyon League.
And that's per school year, five per, what, how many did you say? I'm sorry, say it again, please.
I believe it's five to ten per trimester.
Per trimester, so that could be fifteen to thirty per school year.
Yeah, max, and that's, and sometimes they're on the same day, like we would have a basketball game and a volleyball happening at the same time, that has occurred.
All right, thank you.
And Commissioner Pundabinardi.
Okay, I have the same concerns that Commissioner Raskin raised about the height of the walls for two reasons. One is to keep the balls in the, in the playing field, and two to reduce the escaping sound because the sound will go everywhere. So I have a question for the Mr. Parr or Mrs. Beebe. Is there a problem with raising that wall to ten feet or, I'll let's say, three and a half feet above the allowable roof height in that zone? Which I think is about thirty feet if I'm not mistaken.
No, we would not have an issue with that.
Okay, so that could be a solid wall all the way around. I mean, on three sides, not on the front side, but on the three sides, that are looking directly into the adjacent properties.
For the purposes of sound attenuation for the neighbors, as well as retaining balls in play, we would be happy to raise the height of the wall and possibly add netting above that.
And is there any issue with closing off the windows that look directly on the east and west ends, look directly into the adjacent properties?
No, sir. We would be amicable to, to those adjustments.
Okay, and then the last question, would there be any problem with enclosing the stairwell that's on the west side? The stairs coming down, so again, people aren't looking directly into the adjacent properties.
The stairwell to the west side, we're most likely going to use as an emergency exit-only sort of stairwell. In closing, I've been advised from the sound study people that it's, wouldn't make much of a difference, especially if we weren't using it that often. It looks into mostly a solid wall with several, just a few windows on it of the apartment building, and then into a tree section over the apartment building's pool. So visibility is limited from that area to begin with.
I'm not so concerned about the noise, I'm just concerned more about the privacy. In other words, even if you raise the, put a screen on what would be the rail, if you extended the rail up that are normal three and a half feet, let's say went up to six feet, you would have a little more privacy as kids are running up and down the stairs. Again, they're not looking into the adjacent apartments.
Understood, we would be happy to accommodate that.
Last question, and maybe it's a general question. You have eighty staff, and how many parking spaces do you have?
Currently thirty-four.
And how do you make up the difference, the other forty-six? Where do those people go?
We have a carpooling system that we encourage people to carpool. Frequently in our our transportation management study that we do annually, we have a ridership of around one point eight to one point nine riders per car. We also encourage people to take public transportation. We have a number of employees that live very close by, some in four sixteen San Vicente. And we have bicycle racks front and back. We, we do things like we pay for the train and bus cards. And then the remainder of people that do not have a parking space, we assign our parking on a seniority basis. But we've talked with staff through the, the TDM process about having a buyout for employees that in order to have them not drive, we would encourage them with a cash incentive.
And has that worked? Have you tried that?
We have not implemented it yet, but we're willing to, to do that to find out if it will. out if it will. Uh, but we, we do have some employees that take the train exclusively. Uh, it's changed a little bit during COVID. Uh, but we were purchasing train cards and having the bike racks front and back to accommodate that. And that we did see impact from.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. So Commissioner Fonda Bernardi anticipated two of my questions, um, but I'll follow up with them just for detail. Uh, with respect to the, uh, additional height, and this is sort of an elevation question, um, time of day, do you expect the, uh, roof play area to be used?
Uh, I'm sorry, I missed that last bit.
Until what time of day do you expect the rooftop play area to be used?
Until usually you, 5:30 PM, uh, there is no one on campus here at school. So on the average school day, they would not exceed that time. Occasionally a game has lasted until 6:00 PM.
Okay. So if we think about, if we think about, um, sunset, right, during the winter months, uh, it will be dark by then. Um, if we're raising the wall, uh, you know, by three, by, by at least three and a half feet, um, is there a way to put in, is there a way to keep some small windows higher up to enable natural light to enter the playing field, um, with potentially some polarized plexi? So there's a privacy screen, but so that there's really no way for anybody to look into, you know, nobody's looking into anybody's living area, but you're still getting some light coming through, setting sun. Do you, do you, would that work?
I believe it would work. Uh, and knowing where the sun rises and sets here across this property, it would be the portion of our, of the playing court that faces, uh, northwest towards San Vicente, which is roughly, it's close to the direction the sun sets. So it would not be on the side of the building or the side of the structure of the wall that faces the apartment building. So it would be easier to put it.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's helpful. But I would want to make sure that they're still high enough that we're getting the, the privacy protections. And then, uh, with respect to the, with respect to the stairwell, but you pretend, you have beautiful sort of ivy hedges going on in a lot of places, but you do a green screen there on that stairwell. Um, part of it is also, you know, that's just a lot nicer to look at, but it's, you know, making it a living wall, I think is great for everybody and gets you more privacy for your students.
Yes, I believe we could. Uh, we've looked at it a number of times and we've added those hedges for that privacy for the neighbors and for safety. Um, and we will be willing to extend, uh, what we could do to provide privacy for them.
Okay, great. And now my last question, um, realizing, listening to you talk about the TDM plan, um, I just want to get clarification. This is a little bit out, I, I will admit that this is a little bit outside the scope of, of our discussions tonight, but I'm really glad to hear that you've been encouraging your, uh, employees to bike to work. Um, as you may know, the Santa Monica Protected Bike Way vision includes, um, these, includes San Vicente as a huge connection. Um, it's to the extent that you are interested in, in having folks bike to work, uh, bike to school, that's terrific. Um, but I'm obviously sensitive to, uh, buses rolling up in front of, um, in front of school and blocking the bike path. So, um, can you just share with us, I, I would love to hear a commitment that, um, to the extent that there is eventually a protected bike way on San Vicente, uh, that we're not going to be back here negotiating over, um, you know, blocking the bike ways with after-school buses for games. Just be very upfront about that.
Yeah, I'll be very upfront. There is sufficient space in front of our area, in our designated drop-off zone for a bus to park and the current bike path that is along San Vicente from Ocean Avenue clear through Brettwood. There is sufficient space for a bus to park and bus and bicycles to go by. I don't know about the future city plans, uh, but that current is today.
But the width exists even if, even if there were a protected bike way immediately adjacent to the curb and, and then there was, you know, the buses were pulling up essentially between the traffic lane and the bike way. That's what a protected bike way means. You move your, you move your parking out toward the street. So you're, you're actually protecting bicyclists from traffic. I just want to name, I know it's, it's a little, but I just, you know, I, I think it's important to state it.
Okay. Uh, there's no, no idea to me. I'm trying to work through it in my head. We don't currently have regular school buses that come on a daily basis here on campus. Uh, so that I don't think how big, I'm not sure how big an issue it's going to be there. The school buses that we do have are for specific trips, um, which are usually less frequent than once a week. Uh, so that, that particular component there, the, what I would be concerned with would be a dedicated bicycle lane and how it would deal with pick-up and drop-off given our drop-off zone, which is the length of the property in the front is approximately 213 feet along the frontage of San Vicente. Um, that for pick-up and drop-off time, I think we would need to work with city staff to come up with a, a good compromise there to keep that safe for both the children and the bicyclists.
I'm sure that there are really good ways to mark up bike path, uh, as a slow biking zone or a dismount zone, you know, so the kids are not going to get run over by speeding bicyclists as they walk to a car. Um, and maybe fewer people will drive. All right. That concludes my questions. Are there any follow-up questions before we go to the public hearing?
I have one, uh, question in regards to stairwell that we've been talking about.
Yes.
If I understood you correctly, that stairwell is only for emergency use, correct? It's not going to be an everyday up and down stairwell?
It has not been specifically designated as that, but knowing the layout of the campus, if you look at the stairwell that is towards the eastern component of the campus, uh, there's, there's two of them there. There's a, a vertical one that's located inside. And then knowing this one on the far side, it's, it's two for ingress egress purposes in case of emergencies. Uh, the one that is central or more on the east side of the campus is central to where all the classrooms are and would be convenient. Um, so we would be open to the idea of labeling it as emergency only or something like that. Uh, but it has not been done yet. Uh, it's simply there as a, a second ingress.
Um, the other question I had is, talking about a 10-foot wall on top of the existing building, if I lived across the alley, I would be kind of daunted by looking at a 30-foot wall. Um, would you consider doing some kind of artwork on the alley side?
Absolutely.
Just to give some interest, you know, to the people who have to look at it every day?
Yeah, uh, architectural features and/or, uh, artwork in order to beautify the neighborhood, we would be absolutely open to the ideas of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, Chair, I have one more question. Um, you had asked, what's the latest the play fields, the activity on the play field starts? What's the earliest it starts?
Uh, arrival to campus begins around 7:40 PM. That's when our flagline starts. Uh, at that point, if there's a assembly in the yard, I would imagine that the.
That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready for the public hearing? Let's do it. I, we are going to open the public hearing. I want to remind everyone, uh, one more time, please, uh, please keep your comments. As if you have sent us correspondence, please rely on the fact that we have read your correspondence. Um, if you have sent us communications after 12 noon today, please do not assume that we have read it. Um, we're here, we're in the meeting. Um, and we may or may not have been able to read the messages sent after 12 noon today. Uh, this is a new system. I want to thank staff for making telephonic public comment possible. Please bear with us as we make this work. Uh, it'll be two minutes. And then the last thing I want to say is when you are done speaking, please do not hang up the telephone in case commissioners have questions for you. If we do not have questions for you, you will be disconnected automatically. So with that, let's open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chair. Our first caller of the night is Amanda Sasso. Amanda, I'm going to take you off with mute. Hello, Amanda. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes for comment.
Thank you, Planning Commission. Um, I am Amanda Sasso and I am the Director of Teachers, Student and Parent Affairs at Carl Thorpe. I'm a resident of West Los Angeles, grew up in the Palisades, and I have family that lives in Santa Monica. I feel a deep connection to Santa Monica as it has been part of my, my life since a young age. Not only have I worked at Carl Thorpe for 18 years, but I am an alumna and my daughter was also a student at the school. I urge you to vote to approve the Carl Thorpe Improvement Project. Your yes vote will not only improve the learning environment for students by creating a quieter, updated campus, but it will also have little to no impact on the neighborhood due to the fact that no increased enrollment is proposed. Carl Thorpe has been part of the, the Santa Monica educational community since 1939. In those 80-plus years, the school has been a good neighbor and has been an ally to the greater community by getting involved and giving back. I want to show my support specifically for three proposed improvements. One, an outdoor rooftop play court area above the rear wing and of the existing school building, which will enable students to have an improved physical education program. This additional play space will also enhance our scheduling capabilities by allowing more grade levels the freedom to utilize outdoor space concurrently. Two, the design for a new subterranean multipurpose room, which will provide much more functional space for the school's music program, performing arts, and other activities. The school has never had a true space designed for performing arts and all school assemblies. This space will also allow us to host events that would usually occur on the field in a soundproof room alleviating noise heard by the neighbors. Three, the enclosure of our student lunch area, which will enable students to enjoy their meals outside in rain or hot weather and also provide an additional sound barrier for the neighbors. This new plan is strategically designed to minimize disruption to the neighborhood by limiting noise for children's outdoor activities. At Carl Thorpe, our greatest gift to our students is to create lifelong learners that will get involved and become leaders in their communities. Thank you for your time and consideration, and please think about how a vote of yes will impact our school and Santa Monica community members for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, if you have questions for anyone, wave at me. And I, I won't assume that you have questions unless you tell me that you do.
And Commissioners, I would like to offer a quick update. Um, we did have 18 callers who registered for this item. We have 16 of them in the queue currently. So just for an idea of where we stand. So moving on to caller number two is Sofia Moreno. Sofia, you are now off mute. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sofia Moreno. I'm 11 years old and in sixth grade and started my seventh year at Carl Thorpe School. I would like to begin by saying I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to discuss the Carl Thorpe Master Plan topic with you. Having been at Carl Thorpe for such a long time, I can say that without a doubt, I love my school. It values community, confidence, kindness, and independence. Our academics are exceptional and in-depth, and we learn lessons that shape both our scholastic and personal character, enhancing our perspective and understanding of the world. However, one constraint that Carl Thorpe has is the size of its campus. We've made the most of what we've had, we've had to date, but the small footprint poses a problem in many situations, which I will outline as I continue my comments. Some of the subjects in school I'm most interested in are writing, literature, and history. I also enjoy soccer and lacrosse as sports, and I've played them competitively for quite some time. During soccer season, our field is too small to hold games, and we have to drive many miles to play the sport we love. Such activities would be easier playing on a new field. Even if this weren't be for me personally, personally, I know that many of the grades below me are full of competitive athletes with a safe passion for these sports. Our physical education will also allow for an expanded curriculum with a larger space and will help us access our full potential in athletics. Another way that the Master Plan will benefit our students is with a bigger multipurpose room. During school presentations or theatrical performances, all 280 students plus parents are squeezed into the one-level auditorium, barely being able to see and not having enough seating. As a pianist, I play music to bring happiness to myself and hopefully others. One event where I get to demonstrate my skills during the Carl Thorpe Talent Show. Once again, with both students and dozens of parents trying to fit in a cramped space, it is both uncomfortable and satisfying for the audience when they are too far back to even see their child or grandchild. So in these events, people are standing out the door and up the stairs where they can hardly hear what's going on. Parents are missing some of their child's most prideful moments because of the small space. If you vote yes, students will get to play music and put on performance, performances much more comfortably and in a spacious room where they can see their mom or dad cheering them on. I'm also in favor of a covered lunch area.
Thank you, Sofia. That has been two minutes.
Thank you very much. And it's great to hear kids coming out to express their views. It really is.
Okay, our third caller is Zach Figlin. Zach, you are now off of mute and you're in the meeting. You have two minutes for comment.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Zach Figlin. I'm 12 in sixth grade and I've been at Carl Thorpe since kindergarten. My favorite classes at school are math and history. I've also enjoyed playing sports and PE, especially playing soccer on the small field with my friends. At times, we had two different games going on in opposite directions, but it was still fun. I have felt very supported by my teachers and the administration since the very beginning of my education. The environment is caring and allows me to explore and excel. Despite the support, the school has some limitations due to the small campus, which the remodel will help fix. The planned renovations to Carl Thorpe include the addition of an auditorium, an admissions wing, more play space, and the lunch area being enclosed so students can eat outside, rain, or shine. These additions will allow students to go, get outside, to get more out of the campus so they can better learn, grow, and interact. The architects have also thought about the neighbors and the design so that they, disruption from the school will be minimal. Also, I didn't have much space, although I didn't have much space in my time at Carl Thorpe, I think the addition will very much benefit the students that will attend in the future. Thank you for your attention tonight, and please vote yes on the Carl Thorpe School Master Plan.
Thank you. And again, thanks to our youngest citizens and residents for coming out to speak on the issue.
Okay, our next caller is Stephen Salzberg. Stephen, you are now off mute and you have two minutes for comment. Welcome to the meeting.
Okay. Um, they are asking for a minor modification, which is not sufficient. They either need a major modification or a variance to do what they want to do. The parcel coverage on the second floor would violate the zoning code. Staff report depicts incorrect calculations. The zoning code limits the parcel coverage to 45% for the first story and 90% of that or 40.5% for the second story. The incorrect calculations are illustrated in Attachment D project plans at page A121-B and A122-B. Those calculations are grossly in error. Page A21-B illustrates and incorrectly calculates the first story parcel coverage. Page A121-B illustrates and grossly calculates incorrectly the second story parcel coverage. The applicant erred in his calculation because it utilized the south wing second story or its first story parcel coverage calculation. The applicant grossly erred in its calculation because it failed to include the south wing second story or its second story parcel coverage calculation. Parcel coverage for the second story is substantially more than depicted on page A121-B and described in the staff report. And the actual parcel coverage for the second story exceeds the maximum under the zoning code. If you approve this plan as it is, it'll be violating the zoning code. It's an easy appeal. Um, I don't see how you can do it. And also, there's a lot of things that they misled you. They, they misled you about a lot of things, uh, today, tonight, in the present, in their presentation and in their documents. This, this plan is highly invasive. It's, it compromises privacy. It's, they're very loud. They're never, they've never been very considerate to their neighbors. They punished us in ways, uh, you know, and they ignore our, they've ignored our complaints to them.
Thank you. That has been two minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next caller is John Wallace. John, you are now off mute and you have two minutes for comment. Welcome to the meeting.
That's a hard act to follow. Uh, my name is John Wallace. I am the Director of Security at Carl Thorpe School. Prior to my employment with Carl Thorpe, I was a deputy with the Offendus County Sheriff's Department. I have over 33 years of combined experience in the field of law enforcement and executive protection. I've spent the last 14 years at Carl Thorpe School. I apply my expertise to ensure the safety of the school's 280 students and the security of the school campus. My responsibility is to ensure the safety of our students and faculty. As Director of Security, I try to identify potential vulnerabilities on the school campus. At the beginning of each school year, a security review is conducted by myself and members of the Santa Monica Police Department. I met with the school resource officer and we walked the campus in order to identify any breaches of security and discuss any other. any breaches of security and discuss any upgrades to our school's campus. It was highly recommended during our review to add pinnace work-type screening to the fence line and maintain tall hedges along the playground. This is a very common practice that most schools have adopted over the years. Children's play area should be kept as private and secluded as possible to minimize the possibilities of crime against children. It is my professional opinion that children's safety should always be a top priority. Therefore, I ask that you please consider revisions to the conditions of Carl Thorpe's prior approval that would allow students that allow the school to take common sense security measures to ensure the safety of our students. Student safety is too important to compromise, and the school should be permitted to screen the children's play area from public view. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is Sophie Chang. Sophie, you are now off mute, and you are in the meeting. You have two minutes for comment.
Hello? Hi, I'm Sophie Chang, a sixth-grade student at Carl Thorpe. I've been at Carl Thorpe for seven years, and over this time, I have grown both academically and socially. While my years at Carl Thorpe have been great, they would have been even better with an auditorium and expanding playing field to further foster my athletic and musical passions. These changes would help students in the grades below and the students in the years to come. Having an auditorium at Carl Thorpe would be beneficial to the school community in so many ways. We can use it to hold more theatrical and musical performances, allow students to be engaged in more engaged in music class, and provide for more room so all guests and families would be able to attend. In addition, an auditorium would also provide space to safely assemble indoors when we go back to school. Right now, we can only assemble at the school outdoors, which makes it challenging to gather during inclement weather or bad air. A dedicated play space at Carl Thorpe would help the school community as well. This play space would help students pursue their athletic passions and create room for multiple sports to be played at once. It could also help prevent accidents and injuries by providing more space. This could encourage students to get more exercise and foster a healthier community. In summary, the proposed additions to Carl Thorpe can help create a greater sense of community spirit, allow students greater opportunity to pursue their passions, and provide a safer environment. If you say yes, these changes can help promote a happier, deeper, and safer community at Carl Thorpe and its surrounding neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, next on our list is Dee Menzies. Dee, you are now off mute, and you're in the meeting. You have two minutes for comment. Welcome.
Being a Carl Thorpe School graduate and having served as head of school at Carl Thorpe for thirty-three years, I am honored to speak tonight to encourage the Planning Commission to approve Carl Thorpe's plan to enhance their campus. The anticipated project will enhance the boys and girls' opportunity to connect with the arts by enlarging the underground multipurpose room and theater. By redesigning the outdoor play area, Carl Thorpe School will be able to provide the necessary open space to balance the academics and arts with physical education programs that promote good health and physical fitness. The redesign of the lunch area will help alleviate noise encountered at mealtime. Because this project does not alter the enrollment of the school in any way, there will be little or no negative impact to the wonderful neighbors of the school once the project is completed. Carl Thorpe School has been a pillar of strength in the community since its inception in nineteen thirty-nine and will continue to be a beacon of light for the children who attend the school, graduate, and become the future leaders of our community and our country. It is without hesitation that I encourage you to approve the Carl Thorpe School beautification project that is designed to enhance the academic and physical development of the children. I thank you sincerely for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller is Douglas Bryan Martin. Douglas, you are off mute, and you're in the meeting. You have two minutes for comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Douglas Martin. I live on San Vicente Boulevard directly across from the Carl Thorpe School. Carl Thorpe School plans an acoustic data to support a scheme to expand above and below ground are flawed and must be revised. Prior to installation of existing playground, Carl Thorpe School is quiet and unobtrusive in a quiet and unobtrusive neighborhood. Since playground installation, sounds emanating from Carl Thorpe School have increased. Carl Thorpe School staff with amplified speakers and shouting children are clearly heard across San Vicente Boulevard. Windows must be closed to converse on the telephone. The submitted acoustic report omits data regarding sound levels traveling across San Vicente Boulevard, reporting mainly computer-model conjectural sound levels for buildings sharing property lines with the school. The acoustic report also omits data regarding sound levels of a one-hundred percent increase in playground area and simultaneous playground usage. The acoustic report is incomplete and must be revisited by a non-involved party. Carl Thorpe School's plan to relight the area with bright security lighting will destroy the visual peace and quiet of the existing residential neighborhood. This lighting plan must be discarded as destructive to the neighborhood. Of all the schools in Santa Monica, including Theodore Roosevelt School, Franklin School, Lincoln School, Santa Monica High School, Saint Monica Pacific School, I could name them all, none share any property boundaries with residential properties, save for the Montessori School, which shares one property line with a residential property. Only Carl Thorpe School shares two property lines with residential properties. Only Carl Thorpe School plans to modify an historic residential district. The standards of Santa Monica schools were set aside as a sign of goodwill towards Carl Thorpe School by Santa Monica. Carl Thorpe School is responding to goodwill with bad faith. Instead of conforming to community standards, Carl Thorpe School is attempting to conform an historic residential area to Carl Thorpe School standards.
I have a question. Do we still have the commenter?
Is he still here? Douglas, you're still on.
Hello.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
One question. Have you or any of your neighbors ever filed a complaint for a violation of the city's noise ordinance?
No, I've never filed a complaint. I believe that children make sounds when they play on a playground, and I understand that children shouldn't be silent. Children need to be able to play. However, this proposal wants to generate a one-hundred percent increase in the playground area, which means the potential for having one-hundred percent more playground sounds, that isn't addressed in the audio report.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, our next caller is Elizabeth Lehrer. Elizabeth, you are now off mute, and you're in the meeting. You have two minutes. Welcome.
Hi, I live on San Vicente Boulevard. Carl Thorpe is not a good neighbor. They simply outgrown their property. The school has flagrantly violated conditions of the last C U P. What prevents them from doing it again? At a time when the city of Santa Monica has reduced staff, Carl Thorpe is asking the strain of monitoring their compliance on overburdened city staff. Carl Thorpe has not to run roughshod over the residential neighborhood. I ask that you do I ask that you do everything you can to protect us from the substantial negative impacts of Carl Thorpe's expansion. There is still no remedy of the excessive parking demands Carl Thorpe employees and visitors of the Carl Thorpe employees and visitors. If they are building an underground multipurpose room, why not an underground parking structure? Why not put everything underground? During construction that could go on seven years, where will the trucks park? As construction is to take place during the summer when residents have their windows open, will neighbors be subjected to fugitive dust? Will neighbors be eating dirt and grime for many summers? The new additional sounds of the rooftop open-air basket court and the echoing sound of hardballs and kids screaming is an outrageous intrusion into residential homes. The school is planning to fortify their own windows, but what about the adjacent neighbors? The traffic plan is inadequate and still burdens the residents while idling exhaust-emitting cars wrapping around the streets, blocking driveways and alleyways will continue. How does the school plan to prevent rental scooters from littering the public right-of-ways near the school? No new nighttime lights can be should be used at all, at all during, you know, with this new expansion. Will the new functions be introduced on the property? Will it lower the desirability of adjacent properties, and negatively impact property and rental value?
Thank you. That has been two minutes.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Sam Bakshandepur. Sam, you are off mute, and you're in the meeting. You have two minutes for comment.
Thank you, Commissioners. I first wanted to express how grateful I am for the opportunity to speak to you during these very challenging times. I had two topics I wanted to address. The first one was centered around the uses and safety, which I believe the callers have done an exceptional job addressing the need and now, in the current COVID environment and the years to come, the importance of safety. This is all focused on the second topic, which was centered around character. And this is a very unique school and a very special place. I'm a Board of Trustees member, and for the past three years, I've been fortunate to serve as the Master Plan Commissioning Chair, and I'm also a parent of one graduate who's now in eighth grade and another who's in sixth grade. The character of our school and the DNA, which has always been expressed from the very first day that I set foot on campus approximately a decade ago, was centered around respect for the individual, respect for our community, and how grateful we are to be a member of this community. The complaints that I'm hearing and the points that are being made are ones that we take to heart. We take pride in having our children grow up with humility and become future leaders of our community, and we're good citizens of our neighborhood to make sure that we work with everyone, we hear people's complaints, and as a trustee and as a parent, it's important to make sure that all these are taken to heart. And I assure you, Commissioners, that going forward, we'll continue to hear everyone's opinions, do it in a respectful manner, and whether it was Ms. Menzies from the minute I set foot to Mr. Springer today, our leaders of Carl Thorpe reiterate humility, respect for the individual, respect for our neighbors, and doing things in the right manner, which ultimately will lead to future leaders coming out of Carl Thorpe and into Santa Monica and hopefully beyond. So thank you for your consideration of this plan. We've tried to be very thoughtful over the past three years, taking into consideration internal and external needs.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next caller is Jonah Greenfeld. Jonah, you are off mute. You have two minutes for comment. Welcome to the meeting.
Hello, my name is Jonah Greenfeld. I'm eleven years old, eleven years old, and I'm in sixth grade at Carl Thorpe School. I've been at Carl Thorpe for over six years, and I truly believe that this proposed proposed changes would make a positive difference on my school's campus. During my time at Carl Thorpe, I've been an avid athlete, whether I'm playing with friends during recess or participating on my school's sports teams. I've spent a lot of time on our field and court, and while I've had fun, a little more space will help a lot. During recess or lunch, there are multiple grades and approximately eighty students using the space at the same time. For example, there are football and soccer games going on on the yard while others are also trying to play tag there, and the court is occupied by people playing basketball or handball or both, quite near to the lunch tables where other students are sitting and enjoying their lunch. Furthermore, because of the limited space, students have to negotiate and sometimes quarrel about who has the space for a certain day. An outdoor rooftop play yard would be beneficial towards all students. This will allow students to have more space and socialize with each other without having to worry about crowding. This will give the students more chances to interact with friends. To add a note about expanding the performing arts space, I wholeheartedly support it. I've sung in the school chorus, as well as acted and even danced in school plays. We definitely learned stage awareness because we didn't want to run into each other or fall off the risers. As an audience member watching these plays and seeing the talent shows, there's not enough room in the auditorium, and as a parent, it can be hard. It would be great to enhance the experience not only for the students but for the audiences as well. Students but for the audiences as well. I would like to thank the Commission and all of you for joining tonight and for listening to my remarks. I hope that the renovations help make the students younger than I enjoy their Carl Thorpe years as much as I have. Thank you, and please, yes, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for coming out.
Our next caller is Steve Springer. Steve, you are off mute, and you're in the meeting. You have two minutes for comment.
Thank you. My name is Steve Springer, and I'm currently serving as interim head of Carl Thorpe School. And this is my seventh year at this school, my twenty-eighth year in education. I'm a former resident of Santa Monica, California, where I lived on Tenth Street in the early to mid-nineties. And I have to kind of go off script because everything that I am planning to say has been said, but I want to point out that the students that you're hearing are a product of what we're doing here. And I love Carl Thorpe because Carl Thorpe is a solid institution, and we have a solid foundation, our code of conduct. We teach our students to be respectful citizens, and that is exactly what you see and hear from them tonight. This school expansion is, we're not planning to bring in more students or increase our size, but we are trying to meet the needs of who we are. This school grew out of Santa Monica eighty years ago. This is an institution in Santa Monica. It's not something new, and we're willing to work cooperatively with our neighbors. I feel like together, we can continue to deliver this product, our future. If we look at the world around us today and what's happening on so many levels, and then you hear these students tonight so articulately, you know, plead their case for this, for this improvement, it why would we stop that? This is nothing more than an enhancement. We want to continue to be a solid member of the Santa Monica community. We love Santa Monica. We support the regulations that are needed to move forward, and we just hope that you will hear what we're bringing to the table tonight sincerely and consider passing this so that we can continue as Carl Thorpe School.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was right after two minutes. Our next caller is Dr. Nina Vixani. Dr. Vixani, you are live in the meeting. You have two minutes for comment.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Nina Vixani. I'm a professional singer, educator, and researcher, and I've held leadership and teaching roles in arts programs in schools in both the U.S. and abroad. I actually relocated from New York City in the summer of two thousand and nineteen in order to become the Director of Music at Carl Thorpe. At Carl Thorpe, students in all grade levels, K through sixth, engage in a very comprehensive music program. We sing, we move, we play with a wide variety of instruments that we house, and our program is very robust. We have both process and performance-based presentations that include and are not limited to individual grade-level performances. Kindergarten through sixth grade, each grade level engages engage in performances. Every year, we have chorus and orchestra concerts. We have theater performances, both straight play as well as musical theater. Last year, we initiated a week-long African music and culture residency where we invited a master drummer from Ghana to be our artist in residence, and this culminated in an all-school assembly performance. We have the year, every year, we have a talent show that involves all students and several other special events such as Grandparents' Day. Quality performance, as we all probably know, is that you require a lighting set, backup stage handling, space for rehearsals, as well as acoustic space for quality sound. Currently, music instruction and performances all take place in the multipurpose room, where there is limited space and obstructed views for the audience members. I'd like to also add that the arts are necessary and crucial for healthy development of children and for community engagement, and that's part of my research. And if the Planning Commission would grant approval of Carl Thorpe's plan of expansion, children would have the acoustic and physical space to thrive musically. And furthermore, this will allow me to develop in And furthermore, this will allow me to develop and create and expand the program, providing a variety of entry points into music, serving the needs of children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have a question, Dr. Bakshani, but I want to get clarification from staff. There is some debate about the nature of the multipurpose room and its use as a classroom. Before you answer my question, I just want to clarify, what, could staff explain what the issue is relative to, you know, why does it matter that it is a multipurpose room as opposed to a classroom?
This is Gina Selak. The issue about a classroom is that there's additional parking required, and a multipurpose room was specifically conditioned to not be used as such so that they could have an assembly and performances.
So assembly and performances. So, Dr. Bakshani, can you confirm that that is the purpose of the multipurpose room? Because I have heard you say that, and I'm a huge advocate for the arts, I'm a huge advocate for music, but I am also a huge advocate for consistency. What's happening in the room with respect to music instruction and practices? I think we need clarity there.
From my point of view, first of all, we have many resources, and resources. So that is all in, in that area. There's a specified area for it. When we do hold instruction in there, it's a nice space for, spatially for students as far as movement and physical development and musical, physical development. When it is, when, when it is needed and it is essential, we are not able to teach music there, we push into the classrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Nancy Coleman. Nancy, you are off mute and in the meeting. You have two minutes for comments. Welcome.
Hi. Hi, this is Nancy Coleman. I'm here today representing Noma. One of the things that we are truly concerned with, and I thought it was a throwaway by the, by the school, and that is that Parr's line up to pick up and drop off children. They idle, they give off fuel fumes, they give off all sorts of stuff as they wrap around. There are 290 kids. That means there's a potential of 290 drop-offs each morning and 290 pickups each afternoon. The second thing that I think is truly concerning is that if in fact there are going to be events here, and maybe it's three or four months, maybe it's more, maybe it's less, at 50 adults coming to an event and having to then park in the neighborhood takes away parking from residents. It is already a very highly dense neighborhood of apartment houses, condos, et cetera. And to it, to say, oh, why don't you guys just park? Events need to be scheduled and alternate transportation, either renting Roosevelt School or renting some other place to park. It should be mandatory, not advisory, that any events go to the city and the city is informed and that a parking permit issue with buses is provided. It is bad enough that parents want to run in and do stuff and then try and take up spaces along San Vicente. The third point is, is that the new court per se is on the back end of the school, on the alley. The alley is less than 20 feet to the next door neighbors.
Thank you. That has been two minutes.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Raskin has a question. Nancy, I hope you didn't hang up.
Nancy, you're back off mute.
Good.
Hi, Nancy. I was hoping you could just very, very, very quickly finish that last point.
It is that it's, it's all on the, on the side of the residence in the R1 aborted by the R2 on each side. So, I mean, it's a problem. And lastly, having 32 spaces for 70, or 80 staff is insufficient, meaning people then have to park in the neighborhood and take up spaces for residents in the neighborhood.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Christopher Lamio. Christopher, you are off mute and you're in the meeting. You have two minutes for comments. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and planning commissioners. My name is Chris Lamio. I've been a PE teacher and coach at Carl Thorpe for the last six years. I've enjoyed working with the students and all of my faculty at Carl Thorpe since I joined the Carl Thorpe faculty. The outside play area is literally my life. I am there from 7:40 in the morning till, as Mr. Parr said, 5:30 at night sometimes with home events and games. We have PE in the morning, then recesses, then lunch recesses, immediately followed by afternoon PE, and then after that, the afternoon school sports. Prior to COVID, our students participate in various sports, after-school physical activities like basketball, soccer, volleyball, flag football, and an assortment of after-school physical activity clubs, and even a golf program. We help our students understand the importance of playing fair and lifelong benefits of physical activity. Just as important, they come off the field better prepared to learn. We hope that the COVID threat will pass soon and we can get back to PE as normal. And to go off script a little bit, in regards to 9A, our current play field is too small and a safety hazard for our students on a daily basis. We have a large number of kids and a small space with balls flying. And this is my off-script. Students just playing tag and those playing on the structure get hit by balls from students playing group games constantly. I know specifically one student who was a sixth grader last year. When he was in second grade, he kicked a soccer ball like a sixth grader, and the second graders are playing with the kindergartners. This problem would be addressed by the proposal, the roof, allowing students who may play tag and climb on things like the structure to play on the roof addition and could allow for the students who play a little more physical below in the group games. Most, most notably, the football, basketball, and soccer games, which oftentimes cause someone else to get hurt because of the amount of students in that space. Additionally, sitting at the lunch, students get hit by balls because there's nothing to block it. This is also addressed by the proposal. Lastly, our current multi-purpose, our current multi-room purpose space is we use it when it's raining or when we cannot be outside, and we have to share that with music.
Thank you. That has been two minutes.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Sharon Lee. Sharon, you are now off mute and in the meeting. You have two minutes for comments. Welcome.
Hi, commissioners. Thank you for taking my call. You've already heard all the reasons why Carl Thorpe plans would be beneficial. I want to introduce myself, actually as the current director of Piper Preschool in Santa Monica. We have 300 children at our preschool, and we're not far down the street. But I was, I was a former teacher at Carl Thorpe since 1994, and for over 25 years, I find it as my second home. I'm also a parent of a fifth grader and a graduate who is now in eighth grade. I am one of the community members of Carl Thorpe and of Santa Monica that takes the Metro Line in every day. This was pre-COVID. I live in Los Feliz. I would take the Metro Line from door to door as soon as it was available to our family. I may take an Uber from the station, or I'm fortunate to have a community member pick, pick me up to get to my workplace, and hopefully after COVID opens and allows our children to get back on campus to be a participant at the Carl Thorpe community. We've also been a beneficiary of the scholarship program at Carl Thorpe, and what I'm doing right now is speaking to you of the value of Carl Thorpe School that even though it's in the heart of Santa Monica, its radius reaches farther out. And I really want you to understand that, to me, it's a school that might be small, but it's got the biggest heart that I know of. And allowing for this plan to happen would really, really provide the physical plant to be as great on the outside as it is within the walls. And I just want you to understand from my dedication of actually 31 years as an educator, over 25 years as a Carl Thorpe parent, and currently supporting them in education, that I really hope that you can consider this plan because I think it would benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are on our final caller for this item. Sal Cortez, you are now off mute, and you have two minutes to speak. Welcome to the meeting. Hello, Sal. You're in the meeting.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, Sal. Can you hear us?
Sal Cortez, you are now off mute, and you have two minutes to speak. Welcome to the meeting. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Sal Cortez. I currently serve in the role of...
Mr. Cortez, please mute your computer.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we're, there's a little bit of a delay, so listen to us on the phone, not on the computer.
Okay, very good. Can you hear me now, commissioners?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Sal Cortez. I serve in the role of security at Carl Thorpe School. Prior to that employment, I was with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department with similar training and experience as my director of security, John Wallace. As a member of the Carl Thorpe School community, I have had the privilege of keeping the children and the community safe. The caring nature of our teachers, parents administration has been a wonder, has been wonderful to be associated with and is a significant asset to the surrounding community. I have witnessed years of local community involvement and activism that has been a guiding light for both our students and teachers alike. Some of my responsibilities with the school include the day-to-day safety of the students. The campus is situated in the beautiful neighborhood of, of the north side of Santa Monica, which provides us with a comfortable measure of police and community support. But the issue of exposure to the students is always present. For this reason, I am compelled to request that the school be able to follow the advice that has been given to us by numerous experts, local Santa Monica PD officers, charity consultants, and experts in maintaining a heavy, a healthy visual barrier in the form of our current hedges. The school is a wonderful place, adding many significant and positive attributes to the city of Santa Monica and its community, and I really feel honored to be a part of it and offer all the support to its continued growth and progress in the future. And thank you for your time and patience. Have a good night.
Thank you. And that concludes our caller queue.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Before we, well, we'll hear rebuttal from the applicant for three minutes, but before we do that, I want to give, I, I missed a request in the chat from staff to comment on the 10-foot wall issue, and I want to let staff speak before the applicant rebuts in case there's something they want to respond to.
Thank you, Chair. So we wanted just to address the wall issue. So the wall is proposed at eight feet in order to comply with the maximum height of 30 feet in the R2 zone. We do not see any way to allow a solid wall over that 30 feet. You know, this is not the, the parapet reference that, that was discussed is in relation to sort of like these guardrails that are required by building code for safety and what have you. It's usually like an extension on top of a roof of some kind, and it doesn't really apply to this situation. So we are looking at permitted projections. The only way to, to project above the eight feet would be some sort of like transparent netting, and it's a permitted projection under the code section, it's, it's the permitted projection section, you know, that allows up to 10-foot projection for rooftop features like that, like, you know, trellises, open railings and the like. So we just wanted to clarify that for the commission, you know, that a solid wall over that eight feet would not be permitted by the zoning code.
Okay. Thank you. Let's now turn to the applicant for three minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to, you know, keep my remarks brief. The commission has had a, a long night of testimony already, and I know you have other matters. I'll just summarize that, you know, one of the benefits of hopefully approving our condition use permit amendment tonight is the ability to impose conditions of approval, which include addressing a number of the concerns that a select number of speakers raised tonight. So, you know, we think that the, the commission and the community would be well-served to approve the application and impose the conditions. With respect to the question about the height of the parapet wall, we certainly don't want to violate a code requirement, and we're willing to if there's an ability not to violate the height limit, but, you know, if, if we're restricted to the eight feet and the additional 42 inches that's allowed for parapets on top of a roof, do not apply in this circumstance. We understand, and that's a matter for staff to frankly interpret, not us. I think with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and we're able to answer any questions, and that's probably more efficient use of your time. Thank you.
Okay. Any last questions? We'll start, we'll go in order again. We'll start from Commissioner Fonda Bonardi.
No questions.
Great. Commissioner Fresco? Nope. Commissioner Lambert?
I have one question, Ken, but it's actually for Mr. Parr. Is he still with us?
I believe he is.
Well, sure, I am.
Okay. We have heard over the last hour or so, a number of disenchanted neighbors with complaints about operations of the school and from Noma, which reports to represent those neighbors. Have any of them ever approached you and tried to open up lines of communication about their complaints?
I've spoken with two of the people that had complaints tonight previously.
I'm not talking about the CUP in particular. I've talked about just in the past because it seems like it's sort of a longstanding set of concerns, to put it nicely.
Yes, I've been approached by two of those people before, Mr. Salzberg and Mr. Martin I have spoken with in the past, not in the last year, but I have been approached them before. I believe Mr. Martin had a discussion about children not being allowed to be out and make noise before 10:00 a.m., which I, you know, I sympathize with him of living in a neighborhood with, that children make noise, but he understood at that time that children do make noise. And I said, you know, we would work with our staff to be quieter and such. And then Mr. Salzberg had had an issue with wanting to park in our parking garage a very long time ago, which was a separate issue. But, yeah.
But you don't have enough parking, so why would a resident ask to park in the parking garage?
It was just a summer time.
No, I'm joking. I'm joking. Has Noma, has Noma ever approached you?
I have never spoken with Noma, no.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Missioner or pastor?
I have a question for the noise consultant from Denham Close, if she's still here.
Lisa, can I piggyback on the, one last question from Commissioner Lambert, which is just to note that recommended condition number 12 does contemplate the establishment of a neighborhood liaison, which at least on our end, would appoint a contact person for community members to contact. Thanks, Harvey. I love that.
No, thank you.
I hope you pay them well.
Yes.
Ms. Nobe, I have two questions about noise. The first is, can you explain whether noise, when you measure or model noise, is accumulative? And what I mean by that is if you have two children screaming at, I don't know, like 75 dB, does, do you add the 75 plus the 75 together, or do they meld into each other?
If they were too loud to approach each other like that, the symbols are added logarithmically. So 75 plus 75.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you get closer to your microphone or something?
Okay. The symbols are added logarithmically, so taking your example, 75 plus 75 is 78.
Okay. Because that raises a... Thinking about one, something one of the neighbors asked. And then, can you explain why you didn't do a noise receiver at, you know, the residential property in San Vicente across the street, and why you chose the locations of the three sound receptors that you chose when you measured the noise?
I chose the receptors that were closest to the school. The municipal code is based on property line noise requirements, and they'll be the closest three property line noise requirements. They achieve the requirement across the street with noise receiver.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Raskin?
Thank you. So following up on the noise, uh, questions, um, sorry to, uh, jump back, just to confirm, as noise dissipates over time, uh, or, sorry, over space, that's, uh, uh, there's, there's a set equation for that, right, where, uh, noise dissipates according to a set formula? And, and here, uh, the calculations, uh, are, are looking specifically at, at noise that's generated from the school itself, uh, and it's not other potentially contributing force as well?
It is just from noise from, the noise, the sections in the report, which is the kids or the speakers, and they were discussed separately in the report.
Right, okay, thank you. Um, I just have one other question with regard to the netting on top of, uh, the, uh, the school building, and, um, I'm, I'm curious if, um, the netting, uh, could, uh, if there's, if there's any other, uh, uh, creative solutions that I'm, I'm missing aside from netting that could potentially, uh, stop, uh, projectile balls from flying over the wall, I, I think that, that netting might be the only one, but I'd be curious to hear from, uh, the, uh, the school staff if there's any other, uh, creative solutions that we might be able to use here.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the idea that we have had so far has been netting, and specifically, uh, a dome-style netting across the top, um, similar to something you'd see in a golf driving range, uh, to prevent balls from flying over. That's the idea we've had so far, but we are more than open to any suggestions that, that could be a better solution.
Okay, great. That's all my questions.
All right, Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, one of the community members had a concern about your lot area calculation.
Jim, turn, turn to your mic.
All right, uh, one of the commi- one of the community members raised issues with your lot area calculation. Can you guys talk, talk to us about that, why you've done it right, and why they've indicated why it was wrong?
Uh, primarily, I think I should let the, um, architect address that, but I will, um, mention, Commissioner Reese, that this site, um, has two different floor levels, a level in the front and a level in the back. And so, um, talking about where floors are is, uh, a loo- is a little comp- complicated using the standard language of the code. That said, I'll let the architect answer the measurements, because she can perform them.
I've taken, I've taken your architect.
Yes, thanks, Jim. The, um, so, yes, there's a difference in grade of several feet from the San Vicente elevation to Georgina. Um, the lot coverage, uh, requirement speaks to the main level. Uh, the main level we are seeing as the level that is at grade along San Vicente, and that, um, the lot coverage, where that meets grade for the vast mature, majority of the building perimeter, um, the footprint of the building, which we believe is the intent of the lot coverage requirement, um, has been measured in that way. So the main level is seen as, uh, the, the main floor that is entered off of San Vicente. And then, the upper level, um, is, you know, the second floor of that, so there is a staggered floor level when you get towards Georgina. Um, but in reading the verbiage of the lot coverage requirement, we went by level.
Okay, um, thank you for that explanation. I'll, I'll just double-check that with staff, but that seems logical to me. Okay, thank you. And, um, I don't think this is architectural-related, but my next question is, there's a, there's a condition here that you guys come back to the city in the future and work with them on a plan for some of these special events. Is there a way to kind of create that plan now, or earlier, before you start going to operation, so that the community understands those? Since we do know what some of those, those events will be?
I think we'd be happy to jump in earlier, uh, you know, if the Commission and community wanted us to do so. I mean, there's no magic to the fact that it's set to, to happen later. We do know what the events are, as, um, you indicated, and as, uh, indicated attachments to the staff report.
Okay, I just think it gives us all a little comfort about what we're looking for in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think those are my questions for right now, so thank you.
I just have a, uh, question about that, Mr. Reese. Um, isn't the idea that the Mobility Division weighs in on the operations plan for special events?
I'm not saying they shouldn't weigh in. I'm just saying, why, why would we wait now? The goal is, you know, there's some controversy in the community. We all need schools. We know schools are important. But there's a little controversy in the community, and to the extent we can button up some of these issues now, I think it just gives everyone a little more comfort.
I would just be, I would just be concerned about proceeding on our own without mobility's input.
Oh, I'm not saying, uh, I'm not saying we, ourselves, because we're not part of that operation. I'm not saying let's do it now. I'm just saying, is this something that can be conditioned prior to the CFO or something to that effect? Get it done upfront.
That's the way I understood the question as well, that we work with staff sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, if you want my opinion, I'm happy to, I'm happy to help you.
We always welcome that.
Okay.
Okay, and I, um, I think I don't have any questions, so let us go into discussion. Uh, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, Commissioner Pastor?
I'm sorry, one more. Um, on this valet parking plan that you're gonna have to have, is that intended that the valet, that the... Could you a- agree to something in that that basically says the valets cannot park on the street, or do they park on the street?
I think Mr. Parr needs to answer that.
In general, they do park on the street, um, but we would be open to any sort of plan for where they would have, uh, an alternative location. Um, knowing north side Santa Monica, specifically Ocean Avenue through Seventh and South, uh, towards Montana, I do not know of any particular spot for, uh, public parking at that point. Um, but we could have, uh, we would be open to that. Uh, we do have valet parking a couple of times a year now, uh, and it does work, and they do generally proceed south to the more open streets, uh, where there is ample parking.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll now close the public hearing and go into discussion, or if anyone is ready with a motion, we can start to load up some condition amendments.
Um, well, I'm gonna pretend I'm rich or a little bit, and I, I made a list of things here that I think people, um, are interested in doing, and, um, perhaps want to have some modifications, and I have, one of them is dealing with the height and potentially increasing the height of the walls in the playfield, number one, I have. I have, um, hedge height, I have modification to condition 53. I ha- I want to talk a little bit about lighting. I think we need to talk a little bit about clarifying that the multipurpose room is not a classroom and cannot be used as a classroom. Um, talk about the front hedge. And including in condition four, that that plan be done prior to certificate of occupancy.
Uh, I have a couple of additions, but does it, before I speak, does anybody else have additions? Commissioner Lambert?
Why don't we make the motion, and then you can add it to the motion? Does that sound good?
Yeah, I would just want to, I just want to get the list going. Let's get, I wanted to get the list going, so...
Why, why don't we, why don't I make the motion?
Commissioner, you want to make the motion?
I will make the motion, and then you guys can add your, what you want to add.
Okay.
I move that we approve Condition Use Permit Number 19 ENT dash O250, and the minor modification 20 ENT dash zero zero six six.
And for clarification, are we looking for one vote or two? Is this one motion or two?
You'll need to vote, you will need to vote, um, on each permit, uh, separately. So it's fine to make the motion, but you'll need to vote separately on each.
I'll, you lead. So is that second for somebody, by somebody?
I'll second.
It's up to all the amendments that you guys are gonna put into.
Right.
I need a second.
Let me just, let me just add, um, let me just add to, um, I would like to, the, there is a, I'd like to walk through the conditions that staff was open to fixing from, I just, for, um, procedural purposes here, uh,
We need a second, we need a second.
You do, at least. Commissioner Pastor, okay. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to the, um, applicant's counsel's letter, and for the purposes of this motion, we can change this later. Staff had no objection to condition 16, reading the way that the applicant requested. Um, we do not have agreement from staff on condition 41, so we may want to come back to that. That's the fence, uh, transparency. There was no objection to, I believe, condition 53, uh, being read the way that the applicant wished it to read. That's having to do with, um, a security fence and, uh, uh, a security fence during construction. Um, condition 57, staff wants to leave the way it is, and condition 74 and 75, staff was amenable to deleting those. So let's capture those, if, and I'm, and I want to say that, I'm just gonna say at the end, we can come back to 41, I, uh, on the transparency issue, but these were the ones where there was no, there's no debate, um, between staff and, and the applicant. I would like to add to the list, um, that I would like the LOP, which is, I believe, condition five, to add a sentence that it shall be reviewed for compliance with the Santa Monica Protected Bike Way vision.
I'm sorry, what condition was that?
That's condition five, and I'd just like the LOP to be reviewed for, I'm open to the word compliance or compatibility, that's also a fine word, with the Santa Monica Protected Bike Way vision. Um, which is because San Vicente is identified as a future priority connection for protected bikeways. And I just want that in the record in the Stella.
Okay, so should I start at the top here?
Yeah, why don't you start at the top?
Okay, so, uh, I think what I heard was a consensus about trying to raise the height of the, um, the play wall and/or put netting. And so, does anybody have a sense of what we can do based on what, Jean Mario?
We can do an, we can do an eight-foot wall without a variance.
Great.
Right?
Um, ju- just so if I can, uh, add, um, so eight feet is already being proposed as part, or it's actually seven foot six inches, I believe, we, we looked at the plan, so um, if the Commission wants to increase that another six inches to eight feet, um, that's, that seems to be, um, or, or I think we don't, we don't want to exceed that the 30 feet, I think, is what we want to make sure. Um, if they wanted to do the netting above that, there is no need for the Commission to take action, because that's a permitted height projection for the zoning code.
I, I like their last comments when they talked about posing this kind of in a dome structure with the netting. If they're, if they're happy, if they're willing to do that, I think that solves the problem.
Um, since they offered it, could we put it in the project description?
Um, since they offered it, yeah, we can include it as a condition, just so it's clear, because they, they voluntarily offered it, so I think that's fine. We wanted to craft something.
Are we?
And Mario, did that address your...
Yes, uh, there was also a desire to, is this project, let me ask a question. This project is going to the ARB, right?
Landmark Commission.
Going to Landmarks, okay. Uh, well, there was some concern about the height of this wall becoming a big massive object. Does it need some articulation? Does it need some lines growing on it? Does it need some mural on it? Question mark, question mark, question mark. I don't think we need to deal with that. Maybe that's on ARB, uh, Landmarks Commission issue in terms of softening its impact.
It's already been a landmark, Mario. It's already been a landmark.
Well, then, uh, if we want it dealt with, then we have to include it as amendment to the, uh...
I think that's a good amendment. I like that amendment.
Yep. Um, can I ask while we're on the walls, so to speak, while we're climbing the walls, um, what's, what's your feeling about the windows? I know there's some issues with privacy. It sounds like sunset is not an issue, because the sun sets on the northwestern wall, which doesn't abut private residences, so do we want to make sure that the west-facing wall is a solid wall?
Well, when they were accepting the solid wall at the east and west ends, which are the closest to residential properties, so I think those, those windows should just be part of the conditions.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. I'm, I'm...
Yeah, I, I agree with that, that's what I'm...
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, okay, so...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So Lisa wanted to add no classroom use for the multipurpose room, which I agree with, but I don't think we should count rehearsals as part of that. I think clearly they're gonna have to use that space for rehearsals.
Well, I, I, I think we're, I think we're threading a needle here. I, 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 I mean, I'm in that moment of if it walks like a duck. So, um, to be honest, I, I mean, I feel that we need to be clear that classroom uses are not permitted, and then leave it to code enforcement or somebody's enforcement, but I don't think we can, I, I don't think we, the planning commission, can get into parsing, um, what constitutes a classroom use, uh, since we've heard them say that they're gonna use it for rehearsals, which...
It's unrealistic to expect them not to do that.
No, I understand that, but then it begs the question of why they didn't go out for parking variance, so, um...
Um, a- a- again, that is... Uh, condition 17 is already listed. The subterranean multipurpose rooms shall be used in the manner described in Attachment J of the staff report and shall not be used as a classroom.
Thank you, Jean.
And the applicant has not indicated that they are, um, in opposition to that condition.
Okay, I'll, I mean, I can live, I can live with that. I just, you know, I think we're, I'm, I'm just gonna say that I'm doing that with, you know, slightly a wink and a nod, because I know what music education looks like, so...
Forget I said it.
I will take the staff's, we'll take the staff's language and trust that the, you know, the staff in school are honoring that restriction, because we take our code seriously.
Right. Okay, so let's talk about the hedge height, um, which I believe is condition 41, which is the one that staff is not, is not agreeing to, right?
Commissioner Fresco, yes?
I'm with staff on that one. I think that, especially because it's in an R2 neighborhood, it's much more impactful than, for example, any of the ones that the applicant submitted to us. A lot of our playfields all over the city have transparent fences, and it's also worth noting that of the 10, uh, images that were submitted, six of them were on school district property, which don't follow our laws. And, uh, the rest were, uh, not in R2. They were in much different kinds of zones. And one of them was actually not a hedge, so I really think that transparency is really important for neighborhood compatibility in R2.
Are there other comments?
I just worry about the security issue for the children.
Right. Commissioner Raskin? You're muted. I'm sorry? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in favor of, uh, the edits to condition 41 that were submitted by the, uh, applicant. I, I think, uh, there may be value to transparency, but here, I think that the value of privacy is overriding.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna speak on this. I haven't spoken yet on it. Uh, I am also in agreement with, uh, Commissioners Lambert and Raskin. Um, having some familiarity with the child safety literature, uh, through my professional work, um, I believe that, uh, in this case, we absolutely must err on the side of of child safety. While I would like to see more transparency, um, I would certainly be open to, we're talking about a, uh, eight-foot, are we talking about eight feet high? So I would certainly be open to some forms of transparency above, say, six feet, or a kind of a thinning out of some kind to, to maybe feather the, to feather the fence at that point, but I would... But I would defer to landmarks to kind of give us a sense, maybe, uh, for compatibility, if there is any. But I, I feel strongly about the child safety issue.
I have a, a suggestion that might help, um, which is what if they put the hedge on the inside of the fence that has a knee wall and then a, uh, metal uh, portion? So that, uh, we get the benefit at least of some setback from the sidewalk that can have a lower, more pedestrian sidewalk-friendly planting area?
Yes. That works. Does that work for everybody else?
Only.
No?
I don't, I don't think so because then we, we would be reducing their lot area by having this hedge on their, on their property. I don't think that that's feasible, and I think we would run into further problems with definitions of hedges and, uh, barriers under the code.
Why would we run into a problem with the definition of hedges and barriers under the code?
Well, if I understood you correctly, you're proposing putting some sort of, uh, opaque, uh, solid barrier, uh, where the hedge is standing right now. Is that right?
No, I'm suggesting putting the, there's an existing fence. It's metal on the top and brick on the bottom. And I'm suggest, just suggesting putting the hedge that you guys feel is important for privacy on the inside of the fence instead of having it on the outside, so the street experience is not so overwhelmed by a big, solid wall right next to your shoulder.
Nina, do you have a page reference for us? I'm, I'm trying to pull it up. Um, I, I think I see the hedge that they're asking about, which is on page.
I was looking on Google.
Okay, so page A P O one. Um, and what I'm seeing based on the drawing, although I have no idea, is that you lose, it cuts into the size of the soccer field if you push the hedge back.
Right.
Um.
But does that have to be on their property? Or can it, can it, can it encroach into the right of way?
No.
No, it can't encroach under the sidewalk.
Right, so if they're, so if the fence line is at the property boundary, then they have to have a hedge on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, why don't we take a straw, let's take a straw poll on this one. I'm sorry, Commissioner Raskin, if we can take a straw poll. Um, how many people would like to see, how many people would like to see trans, we'll do it too. Transparency versus, uh, uh, no transparency. So, uh, Commissioner Fresco wanted transparency, which is the current staff report, uh, and Commissioner, uh, Commissioners Lambert and Raskin and I wanted the applicant's revision, so let's just do a quick straw poll. Um, Commissioner Fondaburnardi?
Uh, I would go for the, um, the not transparent one, the one that's more oriented towards security.
Okay, Commissioner Fresco, still with transparency?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Uh, I'm with.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, Commissioner Pastor?
Sure, I'll go with the modification as proposed.
Commissioner Raskin?
You know?
And Commissioner Reese?
I'm good with the, with having the, uh, less transparent, more secure, but I'd rather have, I'd rather look at a, a hedge than a fence if I'm walking down this.
That's my vote, that's my straw poll in the other way. So does head, hedge at the sidewalk or fence at the sidewalk? You're saying hedge at the sidewalk? We'll go to Commissioner Raskin?
Uh, keep the hedge, I think I'll speak briefly. It's totally impossible to move it. It takes decades for these things to grow. Uh, I don't think it's possible to move it at all.
So keep it where it is. Commissioner Pastor?
I, I, yeah, I don't think we should speak on this issue.
Commissioner Lambert?
There should be any new condition.
I agree with Commissioner Raskin.
Okay, Commissioner Fresco?
I do not agree.
Okay, Commissioner Fondaburnardi?
Keep the hedge.
Keep the hedge. Okay, so the consensus, the consensus six to one is, is keep the hedge where it is and allow it to be trans, and allow it to be opaque per the applicant's language. So we'll, we'll add the applicant's language for condition forty-one into the stoa. All right, let's keep going.
Okay, so does anybody have any objection to fixing sixteen or fifty-seven as proposed or deleting seventy-four or seventy-five?
Seeing none, let's keep going.
Okay. And then on five, um, I'm fine with Sean's new language, and I propose that we add that about the consistency with the, whatever it was, mobility.
It's compatibility with this, with the compatibility with the Santa Monica Protected Bike Way vision.
Thank you. Um, and that's all, well, I, let me bring up one other thing. I, I did hear some concern about lighting. Um, and I know there's a condition to have the shielded lights. Do, I mean, this may be a dumb condition because they may just do this anyway, but should we have a condition that basically says, like, you know, once people are gone, you turn off the lights? You shouldn't just have the lights on at night, right? Because it's a rooftop playground? Would that be helpful, do you think?
Easy, easy to add, just a condition that lights are off and there's no one up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would, they may want security lights, so, um.
Security lights are okay.
Right, so for, for, for motion detection and things like that. But what I, what I would suggest is that at all times, those shielded lights are pointed away from the residences.
Yeah. So I think that's it.
Be specific about the direction of the shielded lights. We dealt with this on, um, we, we, the city dealt with it on the, um, civic center playing field. Um, those are, those lights are, I believe, pointed away from potential residences on the other side of Pico.
You mean the playing field with the transparent fence?
Do you mean the playing, with the transparent fence where people do not have an expectation for privacy? Yes.
Okay, so one more thing that we forgot, which is to deal with the stairwell. So do we want to make, do we want to say that that exterior stairwell is emergency, for emergency use only?
We want to green it. We do want to screen it, um, with, preferably with a green wall. They accepted that.
Why, why do we, is that for the purpose of privacy or aesthetics?
Privacy, that was.
Yeah.
If this is an emergency exit and if Calhoun's on fire, no one's gonna care whether it's green or not. I mean, this is an emergency exit.
Yeah, I know, but it's just a lot more pleasant to look across the alley at a green wall than it is to look across at a solid.
It's aesthetics.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they have an aesthetic of great, green walls around their property, so it's not incon.
Okay, Jane.
Can I just clarify, when you say green wall, do you mean like on, because it, it's an open railing? So is the intention for that open railing to be greened in some way? And we're not talking about like literally a screening structure that's thirty feet high?
We are talking about a screening structure that is thirty feet high, I believe, because the idea is to provide privacy both to the kids and to the residents from the apart, from the properties across the alley.
Well, you know, if thirty feet high, it's only six feet high from the walking surface, so people that are walking down the stairs. So wherever the stair is, it's just traveling with it, six feet above it's, there's full privacy.
This is an, this is an emergency exit. Kids are not going to be going up and down on a regular basis unless something horrible happens.
Well, well, they told us, they told us they think it's going to be an emergency exit. I didn't hear them commit a formal commitment.
We're putting that in.
Again, if I may, i- if I could suggest just on that piece that, um, because we don't know what the code requirements, I, I would want to add to this that if allowed by, you know, building or fire code, because if it is necessary, um, for means of egress or what have you, um, I think we just want to make sure that, um, we don't, uh, approve or, or recommend something that's not compliant.
Right.
Right, so, so then let's just make sure it's screen screened, so to speak. Um, and.
To the extent feasible and allowed by code.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so that's all I have.
Should we say, could it's is, should we say that it's an emergency exit only to the extent feasible and allowed by code?
Yes. No, less than that.
But I, I was, I don't think we should be deciding if, if it's an emergency exit or not.
Right, they, they want that discretion.
I think we'll leave them that discretion. Now, uh, I'll just pose one more thing to the commission because these things sometimes come up uh, with respect to the, the roof deck and the, and this, and the stairwell. Um, do they need to come back? Do we need to monitor this?
No, no, no.
Commissioner Fondaburnardi?
So, you know, there's a, there were two big issues that the community was really raising. And one was that it be quote sound neutral, and that's a very high standard. Uh, but I think it's something that we can check once it's built and used as it's being used. There should be a sound test done per the code, which is at the property line, and that if it doesn't meet the Santa Monica sound codes in any direction across the street even, but it's not going to go across the street, of course, then they would have to do some additional mitigation. That is something I think that we can ask for, need a requirement that it be sound neutral, that it meet the code.
Isn't that, isn't that an?
That's actually already in the conditions, that they.
I'm adding, I'm adding parts to it. I'm adding two parts to it. One is the direct quality of it. It has to be in four directions, so it totally, so we totally have it boxed in, so we know what's happening. Okay? And that it be done under realistic conditions, meaning when it's fully amped up with kids on the upper field and on the lower field, then we see what it's doing. So those are the two things that I'd like to see added.
I, I guess I'm just confused as to how that's not already required by the noise ordinance. Right, so.
But they committed to doing a new noise study once it got up and operational. And if there needed to be additional mitigation, they would do it. That's in the conditions.
Okay, but, uh, you know, uh.
The condition, let's look at the condition. Let's just take a look at it. So where is that, where is that condition?
I don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
I believe it's condition eleven.
Okay, let's take a look at it. Condition eleven? Uh. Yes, that is exactly what you're asking for, Commissioner. Uh, it is, they'll, they have to, if they exceed the conclusions of the May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty report, they have sixty days to propose additional mitigation.
Okay, well, um, the, the conditions that they did in that test were rather artificial. They were just with kids on the ground. They had no kids in the air on the third, on the second floor, up in the air. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking that those be the realistic conditions, not the ones that they measured with kids running around on the ground floor. This is what.
Right, please. The applicant shall conduct an acoustical analysis of the upper level play court.
Okay, but I'm.
Actually, I think the operative words are fully operational.
Okay.
And I think what Mario is asking, is, is he's asking, you know, whether or not, not the words in your mouth, Mario, but whether fully operational is going to ensure that it's kind of like, it's got as many kids as it's ever gonna have, and they're doing their thing.
Up and down. That's the question.
Okay, so why don't we say, the applicant shall conduct an acoustical analysis of the upper and lower level play courts after the structure is constructed and fully operational and while the structure is in active use. So the analysis has to take place, you know, you, it can be empty and still fully operational. You want the study to happen when it's full of kids. So say, and while the, while the structure is in active use.
Okay, I have another, um, thing that is.
Mario, before you get off that, if you're gonna go to another condition, can I make a comment on this one?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so I'm not, I like this condition, and this is my, obviously the big concern about this project, is this upper level activity. But we're now saying in this that it has to be measured at the lower level. And I'm not sure I understand how the lower level is getting involved with this because that's an existing condition that they're not trying to any improvements. So once we put, we put the lower level in there, now all of a sudden they're gonna have to do new improvements on the project to keep it quiet. Because that hedge we want to protect, we want to keep on the front, that's not gonna keep noise down. So I was questioning if we really want to go to the lower level.
Well, we want, we want. It actually, it's the Commissioner Pastor asked. And you have two kids at seventy-five, one upstairs and one downstairs. They start screaming, what's the net noise? That's what they were asking for, was net neutrality. I mean, you know, noise neutrality, so, so we have to measure and see where they are. And are they within the code? I mean, are they, are code as those things are happening simultaneously?
Well, but actually, Mario, as I look at this, right? So if they're gonna compare the acoustical, the actual conditions, right? With the conditions in the, in the report, then I actually also think they need, they need to be measuring a property line because that's really, right?
So, question was all along, is that property line in four directions? So, yeah, I agree with you. That's, that's what the definition of the code definition is of the sound, sound at the property line.
And, and, and I don't have a problem with doing it at the property line. That makes a lot of sense. It just, it just, to me, they're trying to mitigate the noise of the upper level. There's already an existing noise on the playground that they have not mitigated. They haven't proposed anything to mitigate that. So there's no way they can do new studies and not have to do new things on the ground level.
Well, I, I would like to see the results, you know, because again, they may not be that impactful. They may still be below the code, even with the buffering they're doing upstairs and the kids upstairs downstairs. Let's see where they are. They still have to stay.
Well, wait, that actually raises a great point. So what we're saying, what the current condition, uh, says is that the comparison is with the noise assumptions made in the report on May twenty-seventh, right? We're not comparing to the code, we're comparing to the, we're comparing to the, the report. If you want to do upper and lower, why don't we hold them to the code?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, let's hold the code rather than their own report.
They have to comply with the code, it's the code.
Can someone, can someone just get clear on this and provide language?
I actually think the language as it's written is fine. I think that number one, they have to comply with the code, they're gonna have to measure a property line.
Right.
And they are, they have to compare it to the noise study they did.
Period.
Well, that, we say constructed fully operational and in active use.
Yes.
So that it's, let, let's do that.
But we are doing everything but entomying these kids, so, you know.
Yeah.
But if we were to entomb them, we'd put a roof on this darn thing.
Yeah.
Okay, can I, can I move on? Can I go to my next?
Mario, are you okay with that? Are we okay where, where we landed? Okay.
Okay. So, uh, the other major concern we got from the community was the parking and the overload conditions. And I'd like to add two pieces to it. Not only do we have the PLOP planned before C of O, I think that's a natural, uh, but also that they be allowed to use the existing parking for events. They said they wouldn't use existing parking, the thirty-four spaces. I think they should use the thirty-four spaces for events. And when they use those up, if they do any, uh, let's say valet parking, they should only do valet parking on one side of the adjacent streets. They can go out as far as they want, but only on one side. They can choose which side, but they should only do it on one side so that the neighborhood at least gets the use of the other side.
How are you gonna enforce that?
Well, I think if, uh, if it's not happening, the neighbors have a legitimate complaint. They can say, look, we watched these guys park cars and they just filled the whole street. They didn't, under the other. I don't care which side they choose, as long as they're leaving some space for the residents.
And if, and if there's a violation, they can call the liaison first.
Liaison, yeah.
Then next, they'll go to the.
Well, I mean, Mario, let's be honest, the enforcement is always the key issue in our city. How do you enforce things that are agreed upon? But you have to start with an agreement to something. And the neighborhood has indicated they're very concerned about the daily uploading. Very little we can do with that. That's just the way it is. Most people are gonna come by cars. If they can have a better plan of getting in and out, I hope they do, but if they don't, that's what it is because they're not increasing the kids. Uh, but the parking load of the events is something that we can specify something to make an improvement. And that's what I'm suggesting, is that we restrict it to one side or the other of the adjacent streets. Because that's where they're going, they're going to the adjacent streets.
Well, it, it, special events are limited to fifty people, right? Do I, do I remember that right? Fifty people?
No, if they have fifty or more people, it is a special event.
Oh. Because there are thirty-four parking spaces, and that would probably be sixty-eight, around sixty-five people if they come together.
You know, I'm going to say, as someone who has, I mean, we all have experience with it. Um, I don't know if anybody lives on streets that have special events and have seen them get really blocked. Um, that's not a bad condition to make because it ensures that there's at least some parking on any given block for a person. Um, I, I can live with that. Um, I, I think, and, and absolutely, if they're, especially if they're pursuing their TDM, then they should have plenty of parking spaces.
Right.
So, um, yeah, I mean, do you want to do a straw poll on this, or are we good with it?
What are we, what are we straw polling?
We're straw polling, Mario, as two items, which is, um, which is use their parking structure for event parking and, um, and park on any one side of any block for their valet. That's fine, right?
And Mario, um, you, Mario, by the way, you had mentioned something about the plot prior to certificate of occupancy, but it's actually required um, prior to issuing to the building permit.
That's.
In the condition.
Getting better.
Yep.
Okay, so do we, are we done? Do we have a motion?
We have a motion, I'm just adding to it.
I said we're going to need this SOA brought back to us next time.
For sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I made the motion for, the motion is on.
The motion was made by Commissioner Lambert, seconded by Commissioner Pastor. Jing, are you good with bringing us a, a SOA to the next meeting?
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have to, um, just to make sure that we, we accurately captured, um, what, what you wanted there.
Good luck.
Okay. Um, let me call the, the role then.
Yeah.
Can I just say, sorry, I would like to make a, um, and, and I really will be baffled. I think this is a hard project. I think it's hard to have a school like this in the neighborhood. If it hadn't been here for so long, I think we'd be having a different conversation. And I, I do really think that, I hope that the neighbors appreciate that what Ken said was right, which is that you are better off having these conditions documented in this CUP that makes them more enforceable and holds them more accountable. And I hope you appreciate that. And I do really want to encourage that the person who is the new community liaison rep, that the neighbors reach out to that person, that they express their concerns and open the lines of communication and really try to like get the things fixed that you have problems with. Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, and I also, I think Commissioner, if I can add one thing, which is Commissioner Lambert made a really important point earlier, which is, um, outreach to the school is open. The school seems to have made clear that it is available for conversations. It's designating a neighborhood liaison. I hope that the relationship between the school, for example, and Noma will become a more active relationship with more frequent communication, because that will, uh, that will facilitate a better development of how all of this unfolds, and we need more of that active interaction. Uh, but let's be frank, it needs to come from both sides.
Right.
You know, for, for, for people who have concerns, you know, you start by calling the person with whom you have the concern, and then you go, you know, to the next step. So folks who've showed up here with valid complaints that we've taken very seriously, we want to encourage those folks to reach out directly to the school and have those conversations, and now they'll have this neighborhood liaison program, which maybe will be modeled for other, other neighborhoods and other projects, so. Yep, we ready to vote? We're voting. Jing, you'll tell us what we're, we're voting on the, on the part of the CUP and then the, the.
You're going to vote, yeah, she's going to vote on the minor modification first.
Okay.
Um, so Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
This is for the, uh, lot coverage?
The, correct, the parcel coverage, yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
I thought this is the CUP, isn't it?
No, you have to, you have to do the minor mod first before the CUP, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris.
Yes. Passes seven zero.
Next vote is for, um, approving conditional use permit. Um, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Uh, yes, and if you allow me to add, one of the reasons I'm approving this, and I know there's a lot of community resistance, it's about two to one in favor versus against it, is that, you know, this is an attempt to do more with less. The fact that they're building stuff underground is very expensive. The fact that they're putting stuff up in the air, they're using a roof in a very active way, that's part of our general ecological approach of things, trying to do more with less. Otherwise, we need to spread out more and more and more and more, and we're beyond that point. So this is a, trying to in as tight as we can and mitigate the impacts. That's what this is about. Use do more with less, but mitigate the effects on everybody around it.
Good point.
Uh, Commissioner Fresco?
Hmm, no.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris.
Yes, so that passes six one. All right, um, it is now eight forty-six. We've been at this for three hours and sixteen minutes, and we have a whole other CUP left this evening with a lot of people who want to be heard. So let us take a ten-minute break. Let's be back here at eight fifty-five, nine-minute break. Um, you can all go check the results, the latest results of whatever you want to check, and, uh, we'll be back here at eight fifty-five.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone, yep.